I'm sure that clock is a little bit fast, so I've got 7:03 here. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance and then I think I'll just announce it now. A moment of silence, I would ask for Mr. Paul Northrup's funeral today. And he was our town's first town administrator, and I understand maybe a stint or two as our town clerk. Probably did a whole bunch of other things in the community. So we'll do the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for a moment. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the law, the United States of America, to the republic of this world, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all
Stand.
Listen to him. Okay, it is Monday, February 11th, 2019. Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk, for the roll call, please.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
All present.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to change a couple items on our agenda. I'd like to move item E1, Town Administrator, Industrial Park Lot 109, Block 113, and F1, Interim Fire Chief Bruce Mels, to just after C1. Get some of the business done, and I think F1 will be a topic of interest to a lot of people.
Which one? E1 and F1.
Yep.
I'm having a little trouble hearing, which makes me think you must be too. If I heard correctly, it was E1 and F1. We're just gonna slide that up two slots to after C1.
Correct.
Okay? I'm refreshing on my Robert's rules. I'm not sure if that's a debatable mo— well, does it have a second? Let's start with that.
Second.
Very well.
Take the motion.
Okay. Any of— any— oh, that's— I gotta vote on that affirmation. Very well. Okay, moving right along. Consent agenda. You guys hear okay? It's really bad.
Yes, yes, we moved it a long time because we don't
This is good?
Yes, it's
Okay.
Everybody else will do what you're doing.
Okay. All right, great. Maybe it's just me. Consent agenda. As usual, minutes. We have council minutes for January 22nd, 2019, executive session minutes from January 22nd, 2019, ditto regular and executive on January 28th. We have minutes from boards and commissions, historical advisory board, we have two sets, historical cemeteries, Tiverton Prevention Coalition, open space, and land preservation's annual report. I always like to see the annual reports myself. The Smithfield School Committee Resolution Regarding State Education Funding Formula, Mr. Representative, Honorable Representative John G. Edwards, regarding the property at 2 Bismarck Avenue. Other correspondence received and filed from the town of Burlville, Rhode Island, Resolution Relative to Energy, Facility, Siting Act, and Consideration for Support, Hopington Regarding State Financial Support to Education, and no less than 26 letters regarding the Tiverton Library Board of Trustees Candidates. The—we have approval of tax assessor abatements. And those are the four consent agenda topics. Any to be removed for brief discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to remove CA2D, please.
CA2 Bravo, that would be the historical cemetery?
No, Delta.
Delta, I'm sorry. They really must be me, I just
It is you.
Can't hear. All right, I'm sorry, that was D as in Delta for open space. Any others? Okay, hearing none. May I have approval of the consent agenda as presented, other than CA2D?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, very well. All those in favor? Okay. Counselor Hilton, CA2D, open space and land preservation.
I would just like to note that we have the annual report from open space, and yet again, they've had an amazing year. A lot of folks don't hear what they do, but I would like to just recognize them and thank them, especially Chairs Brian James and Gary Plunkett, on another outstanding performance from open space. And they don't always get enough recognition for what they do, so I'd just like to express my appreciation.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion to accept the receipt and file the annual report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, the second. All those in favor? Yes, thank you very much. We are onto the open public forum. We have one posted item, and then we have five sign-ins. The five sign-ins are on the agenda, so I'm gonna ask that those five speakers wait until the agenda item, although they will have speaking priority. Four items on the library appointments. But one says library policy, so hmm, library policy.
Different.
That might be different. I think I might—I think I might hear that now, and then the Sanctuary City is definitely on the agenda, so the questor will hear that. We have a guest here on the annual report, though. Is that correct?
Yep.
So why don't we handle that first, then? Ms. Catherine Damiani, I'm gonna leave this up to you. If your item is not similar to the other library items on the agenda tonight, then we'll have you heard now. Otherwise, please, please wait till later in the evening.
It is different.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you. Actually, why don't we just knock— yeah, go ahead, and then we'll get into the annual audit.
Would you like me to sit?
Is that
It's up to you.
Standing's fine.
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Catherine Damiani, and I'm the library director at Tiverton Public Library. I am here to clarify a few points about library incident reports. Incident reports are generated when events occur that endanger the staff or public, an injury occurs on library property, library behavior policy is violated, an individual or group is asked to leave the library property, and/or situations that merit police or fire department assistance. Assistant— incident reports serve as documentation of situations in which the library may be held liable for any of the above listed events. The reports also help us identify recurring situations and/or patterns of repeated policy infringements, so that suitable follow-up action can be taken when necessary. These reports are considered public records. The library behavior policy can be found on the library website, and specifically states that incident reports are generated when infringements on this policy occur. Between 2016 and 2018, 22 incident reports were filed with library administration. One of my duties as library director, among many, is to uphold policies set forth by the library board of trustees, and ensure a safe and harassment-free library for staff and individuals who use our library. I ask the town council's support this evening to ensure the Tiverton Library's staff and patrons are able to enjoy the library in a harassment-free atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well under three minutes, I think. Okay, so we have the firm of—if I'll get this right, Haig, Sahadi, and Company, PC, presentation of annual financial report, year ended June 30th, 2018.
He's got a pencil, he's here. He's here.
Hi. You were very close.
Thank you.
All right. So you— thank you for having me here. We're here to present the fiscal year 2018 financial statements, hoping that you all have them in front of you. And what I'm gonna do is walk you through some of the more important points in the report. If you have any questions along the way, please don't hesitate to ask. I'll be more than happy to do my best to answer them for you. So we had— excuse me. We had a very smooth audit. Working with Denise and the finance staff is always a pleasure, and they really do a great job of getting us the documentation and the information that we need in a timely manner. So thank you to her and her staff. The financials start on page five, and this is our audit opinion. So if you were to read through these couple of pages, you would see that we issued a clean audit opinion. Basically, what that means is we feel as though the financials as presented are free of material weaknesses and significant deficiencies as far as the numbers are concerned. So it was a clean opinion. And the actual financials start on pages 19 and 20. And on page 20, there are a couple liabilities that I want to focus on, the first of which is about halfway down the page, it's your net other post-employment benefit liability. That's a new liability on the books this year, so if you were to compare that to last year's financial statements, you would've seen something different. What you would've seen is the net OPEB obligation. And the obligation is basically what your actuary has said you should've been funding over the course of the plan's history. And that's sat at about 8.1 million last year. Now that the full liability is on the books, it's jumped up to 26.4 million, so a pretty big difference. It's exactly what you would've seen in 2012, 2013 with the pension obligation and the pension liability. It's just for your other post-employment benefits. So currently, out of that 26.4, 7.4 relates to the school. That fund is—that's funded at 3.8%, which is up from 3.6 in the prior year, and $19 million of that liability is with the town, and that's funded at 0.72%. So because these liabilities have kind of been—I don't wanna say buried, but sort of buried into the notes and the disclosure of the financial statement for so many years, now that they've come to light, you're starting to see that the plans are beginning to get funded, because it's a little bit more upfront. And we're seeing it across the board. So for the most part, we don't see any plans that are over 10%. So I know that the relatively—the trust are relatively new for the town. But just to give you some comparison, the liability right below that is your net pension liability, which is the 32.6 million. A good portion of that is state plans. And the state plans are gonna tell you—for the state for the teachers and state for the municipal employees, they're gonna tell you what your liability is. If you want to fund it down to a lower amount, they're not gonna let you. So only about 5.5 million of that total net pension liability is the town's private plan. That is funded at 69.3%, which is up 4.1% from the prior year. So 4% jump is pretty sizable when you're talking the liability of that size. Also, to give you some context, if a plan is funded under 60%, the state is gonna call that critical, and they're gonna require the town to come up with a corrective action plan to get it over 60%. So to be over 60% is certainly a good thing.
So what percent did you say it is right now?
69.3.
The overall was 32.6?
32.6, if you include all the state plans.
Include along with the private plan.
Correct.
Do we have a breakout just for the non-local?
Yeah, I have the notes to the financial statements. I'll point it out to you exactly where it is. So if you look at page 22, you're gonna see that overall, your net position increased by about $170,000 for your governmental activities, and decreased about $74,000 for your business type. Your business type is basically constructed just of your school lunch fund, as far as the activity. But when a creditor or when a rating agency, a bank comes in, they probably aren't gonna be focused as much on your long-term assets, long-term liabilities, as much as they are on your fund financial statements, and those are on pages 23 and 24. So at the bottom of page 23, you're gonna see that the town had total fund balance of $25.5 million. And what I'd like to focus on and make sure you understand, it doesn't mean you have $25.5 million in the bank that you can, you know, spend on whatever you like, as nice as that would be. So we provide a breakout for you, and I'm gonna have you jump all the way to page 84. And on page 84, you're gonna see just what that $25.5 million is constructed of. A good portion of it is your capital projects. So when you go out for a bond and you're building a project, as you spend that down, you're gonna see it's gonna have a pretty sizable fund balance. So about $15.4 million of that is tied into capital projects. And overall, the town has $2.3 million worth of unassigned fund balance. So pretty, you know, decent percentage, but certainly compared to $25.5 million, it's not the full amount as being unassigned.
Just to review, the restricted for means there's something in law or policy that says it must go to this. Committed is there's some statement, we're probably gonna use it for that? Is that how those
Yeah, that's exactly—that's exactly correct. Restricted is usually gonna be an outside party, and that outside party could be a grantor, like a state or a federal grantor, or it could be a law that is written. So especially as it relates to the school department, that $1.3 million, it's restricted for use on educational purposes by state law, so. And then anything committed has been— maybe it's encumbered by the town in the current year. It's something that would be voted on by the council, so it's not a third party, it's internally designated.
I was committed.
Correct.
And the unrestricted, to remind me, is— what's the number?
No, that was restricted.
If you— so the total unassigned for the general fund is 2.75 million. If you combine in any funds that have deficits, you're looking at 2.3 million.
And this is from the council's perspective, right? So the 2.9 million for the various school renovation projects, that means the town has committed that to the schools, not necessarily within the schools for a particular purpose? Is that
So the full fund—the full fund balance of 4.27, which is the total schools, that's their fund balance. They've internally—the school committee has designated the 2.97 on capital projects. Is that clarified?
Thank you.
So if you could jump back to page 24, you'll see that the general fund ran a surplus of $523,000 in fiscal 18, and the school unrestricted fund, which is the school's general fund, ran a deficit of $158,000. The third column you're gonna see, you're gonna see a pretty sizable decrease in fund balance of just about 7.6 million. Majority of that is the school bond that's been spent down. There's still about $7.5 million as of June 30, 18th, but I'm sure a good portion of that has been spent since then. Page 28, these are your business type activities. I just wanted to point out the two funds that it's made up of. The land acquisition fund, which has been stagnant, at least for quite a few years since I've been here, and the cafeteria fund, which is your school lunch fund, and that had a deficit this year of just under $74,000. Page 30. If you were to look at the bottom of page 30, under your employee benefit trust funds, just so you get an idea of how much money you have tied up in your pension trust plan and your two OPEB plans, that pension plan, the 12.37, that's strictly the town's private plan. It's not the—not associated with the state plans. And then your town fund has $138,000, and your school OPEB fund has $292,000. I'm gonna bring you through some of the notes and just point out some of the ones that are more important, starting on page 48, it's a breakout of your capital assets. So if you kinda wanna get an idea of what you have as far as construction and progress, what's been put into— what's been put into service, this kinda provides a nice breakout for you. And also on page 49, which is a breakout of your long-term debt, you would see that in fiscal 18, you did not have any additions to your bonds or notes, no additions to your capital leases. The only increase was due to the state pension, which is the MERS plan. Page 56, as it relates to the OPEB plans for the town and for the school, there's really— there's a lot of factors that go into determining what that liability is, but the two main ones are going to be the discount rate you use, which is what you anticipate your assets are gonna work at over the course of a year, and below that is your healthcare trend rate, which is what you anticipate healthcare costs are gonna be going forward. So those are really the two that drive what your liability on your books is. And so if you were to look at the top two, you would see that you're using a discount rate of 4%. Now, 4% is pretty low compared to what the state is using. The state uses 7% for your private pension plan, you use 7.5%. But when your assets— when your plan is funded at such a low level—I mean, I think 3.5 was the highest, your actuary is probably gonna convince you to use a much lower, much more conservative discount rate, which is what we've seen across the board. So—but you can see 1% increase, 1% decrease in that number, has a pretty sizable effect on your liability. Right below that is your healthcare trend rate, which is set at 5%. We've seen that across the board with every valuation that we've worked with, so I haven't seen a different number than that. So you're using what we would anticipate seeing.
So is the OPEB discount rate, is that determined by GASPY at all, or is that—we have flexibility to change that?
You would have some flexibility to change that. You'd have to work with your actuary. There's a lot that goes into it that is a little bit more specific than what my specialty is, but it's determined by both the town working with your actuary. So if you wanted to increase it or decrease it, you could work with them to do that.
Would you rather have questions at the end, or can I
Right.
So I'm very interested in this discount rate, and it's something that, as we hopefully continue to develop long-term financial planning and trying to find a way to meet all of these needs, at least it strikes me that funding something at 1% is not appropriate, should be much higher. So these discount rates are—we're discounting liabilities, right? Streams of future liabilities?
Correct.
So the lower—the rate in absolute terms
The higher your liability.
Higher the liability.
Correct.
Okay. And then on the other hand, if we were sitting on—you know, trying to think from maybe like a corporate finance perspective, if we're sitting on a bunch of assets, let's say we had a portfolio of bonds or whatnot, or
Similar to what you have in your private pension plan.
Okay, so what— so we're using 7.5 to—that's the assumed growth of those assets, as well as the discounting of liabilities? Should they be matched, though?
Typically, they are. But as far as using 4% versus using 7.5%, I don't wanna speak for the actuary, but I don't know that they can use a higher discount rate, a more aggressive approach, at such a low funded status.
Right.
There's a lot of intricacies there that
No, I think that makes sense, 'cause you have less sort of corpus to play with, right?
Right.
So you'd have to be more and more conservative as you have less and less money.
Less of an ability to invest in a more diverse, maybe a more aggressive portfolio.
I think GASPY requires— allows higher discount rates for— on the pension side, for the funded liability, and then on the unfunded, they require something much lower.
We wouldn't even have to match, right? We could—we could assume our investments will do worse than the—we could have a more cautious approach, right? We could assume 4% on
Oh, yes.
Investments and 8% on liability. Well, no, go the other way, right? Go the other way.
Right. Right. You could elect to take a more conservative approach, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. And then, is it—I don't expect you to have any answers to this question, but I mean, do you—have you ever heard of a town having something like a—like a cost of—like a weighted average cost of capital, or like a consensus assumption? And I understand for these particular asset liability classes, we're—but just in general, and this is a question I've been asking around Town Hall, and I don't know that it's really ever been asked before, have you ever heard a municipality say that the risk-adjusted cost of capital on average in the town is 3%? Or you don't have any
To an extent. It might be a little bit beyond my scope, but we do provide in the RSI, and I can probably point out to you at least what your weighted average is for
Okay.
For each plan for the last couple of years. And I can show you that real quick on pages. You were to jump to 110 real quick? So your annual money-weighted return—money-weighted rate of return for the last five years is shown there, and that's directly related to your private pension plan. So you can see they worked at 12.3 this past year, almost 15 the year before, and then, you know, 15 and 16 were tougher years.
Most of our investments are in that plan.
Correct.
I mean
Yep.
But the asset—the liability categories, it sounds like they already have category-by-category discount rates, which we can
Yeah, that may actually be in the note, too. If you—that's states—I mean, on page 55, you have a long-term expected rate of return for each—for each category that you're investing in?
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Just real quick, on the same page, in here, or do you happen to know where the 5% for healthcare trend rate comes from?
That's an assumption that's determined with your actuary of your OPEB plan.
Okay, so it's not explained in here anywhere?
Not particularly, no. But like I said, I haven't seen it any different.
Is that the same actuary we use for our pension?
No, I think they're actually different. Denise? They're different, yeah. I think USI is for your pension plan, and—where do I have that backwards? Odyssey for your pension.
Odyssey for
There we go.
Great.
It's hard to memorize them all. I apologize, I don't know where I was.
On page 56.
Thank you very much. If you could jump to page 81. And just to give you some perspective, I wanted to show you that you were using 7.5% on your pension plan, right at the bottom of that page right there. We already kinda talked about it, but I wanted to at least let you know where to find that. Pages 87 and 88, these are going to be your budgetary comparison schedule for your general fund, so your budget versus actual for revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2018. And if you were to look on the revenue side, you're gonna see that your—overall, your actual property taxes came in $182,000 lower than what you had anticipated. Below that, you're gonna see that your intergovernmental revenue came in $194,000 higher than what you anticipated, and that's pretty common across the board. Essentially, the state changed their laws as it relates to motor vehicle phase-out revenue that's come in, and so you very, very much across the board, so every municipality that we've worked with, we've seen that number come in quite a bit higher than anticipated. Below that, your licenses, permits, and usage fees were 307,000—307,000 higher than anticipated. A good portion of that, about $115,000, relates to building inspections and permits over budget, and also about $105,000 came in over budget for your rescue revenue. I know you budget somewhat conservatively in that line item, and it happened to come over quite a bit in fiscal 18. Your expenditures, nothing really significant over or under budget. You're gonna see an $80,000 savings in your debt service for your principal. That is actually the impact fees that came in, which could net it against them. So your budget—you would've met your budget otherwise if that hadn't been shown in there. So you budgeted for your principal properly. On page 88, you had intended to use fund balance of about $103,000, and you ended up having a surplus in the current year of about $523,000. On page 113, this is gonna be the budget and actual for the school unrestricted fund, the school's general fund. Your other revenue came in at about $215,000 over what was anticipated, and that's directly related to Medicaid money. There ended up being significantly more special education costs than were anticipated in fiscal 18, and so the school department decided that—and they had the ability to draw down on Medicaid revenue. On your expenditure side, your salaries came in slightly favorably, really a drop in the bucket if you—of a $17.5 million budget, but your employee benefits also came in a little bit under budget, and that was due to some savings in healthcare costs and savings in unemployment insurance costs. Right underneath that, your purchase services, that line item is directly driven by your special education costs, and you really don't have a say in what those costs are. And if you end up having, you know, significantly higher census than you anticipate, you're gonna end up having to use a lot more money in purchase services, so $270,000 over budget. A lot of that is offset, though, by the Medicaid revenue that came in, as I noted above. Your supplies and materials were a little bit lower than budgeted by about $125,000. Some of this has to do with the way that UCOA is set up and how you categorize things. There was about $58,000 in technology items that I think were initially budgeted under supplies, that actually went to capital outlay, as well as $64,000 in some unanticipated building costs. So the supplies were reduced and sort of offset by your capital line item right underneath And then overall, your school unrestricted fund had a deficit of almost $159,000 in fiscal Last area I want to touch on, page 156. This is the annual supplemental transparency portal, the MTP2, and this has given not just you guys, but really all the towns and cities quite a bit of headache. It's a lot of work, and the financial statements can't get issued until this is done. Essentially, what the state's trying to do is compare how much Tiverton, percentage-wise, is spending on public safety or public works or education compared to some of the surrounding communities, and really every community in Rhode Island. And so this—is a lot of work. It's only a few pages, but I—you know, I feel like the work is worth it. It really does do a good service for the state, and it really helps us hone in on, you know, some of the way that we report your financial figures. So really, great thanks to Denise, who worked tirelessly to get this done, and so.
So can you explain again, what is this grouping called? What did you call the grouping?
On which page?
I thought I was on pa—oh, 156. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Never mind.
No problem. And so, yeah. Quite a bit of work. They asked a lot of great questions, but
So the—this transparency section, this is just a standard accounting sheet, or is it showing—telling us somewhere the comparison to[1797.11] is it showing, telling us somewhere the comparison to average?
So, so if you were to go to the state's website and go to their transparency portal, you'd be able to, to generate the reports that they're generating. This is basically kind of regurgitating what's already in the financial statements, but it's just we can't issue the financial statements, it can't, it can't be finalized until this is complete.
So this is our contribution, the comparisons are found?
Exactly. Yep. More than happy to answer any questions, if you got them.
So, so just going back to the, the OPEB. So the, the bad news is that we're horribly underfunded on these items to the tune of, I've got my notes here, but about twenty-five million dollars?
Twenty-six point four, yep. Seven and point four for the school, and then the rest nineteen million for the town.
So you're telling me, I mean, not to put you on the spot for a judgment on whether that's good or bad, but you're saying you rarely see them over ten percent? In your practice?
Yes, only because the liability, like I said, it's kind of been buried for, for quite a long time. Everyone treated OPEB as pay-as-you-go, so they were paying for the costs as they came in and not funding it at the actuary-determined level. So now that the liability's come to light, that's when they've started to get funded.
About, well, about eighteen, nineteen million on the town side, another seven on the school, so it sounds like twenty-five million, twenty-six million?
Yep.
Roughly.
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-six point four.
Accounts hate when you round off like this. That sounds really bad, but the good news is that it's being fully booked now, I guess. And as an aside, we spent a lot of time at one of our recent meetings talking about capital needs of the town, and that we're, I think, trying to get to a point where we hazard some guesses on just how big those capital needs are. Now that, whether our roads all need to be repaved isn't really something that you would book in the audit, right, unless it was.
Not until, not until you actually went out and got a bond for it.
Right.
Or if, if that's the path you chose to take.
Or like if the DEM came into town and said you're legally obligated to do this water quality remediation plan, then you might book it as a potential liability.
Correct, absolutely, yep.
So setting all the capital aside, which I'm not asking you to, to, to book, but do you think we kind of have, I mean, as, as, as big and scary as it is, do you think we kind of have everything now on the table? Are there any of these other categories out there? I've been railing on this OPEB thing for a decade myself, so I'm kind of glad to be sitting here.
Yep.
Do we have it, are we missing anything else, or is this, we know what we're dealing with now?
I would hope you're not missing anything else, that would be news to me.
Yeah, okay. Part of the job, right?
Okay.
Not, not that I'm aware of, at least.
All right. I will open up the floor for questions. I do want to congratulate both you and the treasurer and administrator, everybody else, getting a clean audit, that is, that's, that's a lot of hard work, and it's something to be very proud of, we appreciate that. Floor is open for questions, other questions?
Just wanted, the, the OPEB liability will adjust downward for any contractual changes, right, that affect what's promised to employees, is that correct? Do you have some sense of?
Yeah, it would depend upon whether the changes are for everyone, or, I mean, a lot of times we, we see is if anyone's been grandfathered in for a certain amount of years, and you make a change to the plan, it may, it may not impact them, so it may not trend it downwards, it really depends on, on how you, how it's done.
So this is, liability's already incurred, so if, if a provision, say, only applied to new employees, it wouldn't change the liability until those new employees are hired and start working?
Correct, right.
And was there, like, a more informal, any suggestions on controls or any improvements that we, we can take that up with the treasurer?
Yeah.
Or any that you wanted to touch upon?
No, typically, we have, we have a second report issued, it's being finalized and, and almost complete, but in that report, we, we talk about a couple of things. We talk about internal controls over your financial reporting, financial closing process, and we talk, talk about your federal money that gets received for your federal grants. And so we, a lot of, a lot of the work we do is with the numbers, but really, I'd say a good half of the work that we do is behind-the-scenes work, so we're testing your control procedures over cash, first ones, cash receipts, payroll. We do quite a bit of work, and we asked Denise way too many questions, but no, if, if we had that report, it would state that we did not know any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls.
We might just keep you around for all the good news here, other than the OPEB liability. Okay. I, I think we, do you want to vote to formally accept this? I think we're required to, are we, are we not, at least acknowledge receipt? What do you want to see here? Trying to remember what we did in the old days. No?
I don't.
The treasurer signs off on it, not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I, I may be mistaken, but I don't remember voting.
Okay, well, we'll, we won't vote, but if we need to vote, we can always take another vote and ratify, whatever you need us to do.
Sounds good.
Is that okay with you?
All right.
Okay, well, again, thank you, congratulations on the clean audit. Madam Treasurer, nice job.
Thank you.
And you have a great rest of your week.
Thanks.
Okay. We are switching into our public hearing, board of licensing mode here, so we're now have a request from Amicable Church, care of Reverend William A. Sterrett, thirty-seven, thirty-six Main Road, requesting a special event permit to conduct the seventh annual Amicable Farm Coast Five K Family Run and Walk at Tiverton Four Corners, not all that far away in warmer weather, Saturday, April sixth, twenty nineteen, at Niam. Did I leave anything out? We have a nice application, would you like to speak, any comments to introduce?
Amicablefivek.org, I think, not a hundred percent. I should know that, my daughter is responsible for that. You can register. And you do it soon, you get five dollars off, just saying. No, it's gone smooth so far, and it's a pretty quick and easy, we set things up away from sight on Saturday, Friday evening, and we're cleaned up, we start at nine, so we cleaned up probably around eleven, and pretty much out of the mess by then. The police chief has signed off on it, we've been in conversation about it, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd make a motion to grant a special event permit to Amicable Church for the Amicable Farm Coast Five K Family Run Walk on April sixth, twenty nineteen.
Second?
Can we have a live motion, a second? I want to make sure, I've called out twice, would anybody from the public like to be heard on this licensing matter? Second call? Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we.
May your meeting go smooth and quick tonight.
Can you stay and give us a blessing on that? Thank you, Reverend. Okay, we moved, so we moved the agenda just a little bit here, so we're going to put our town administrator, I think is sponsoring, we're back on the agenda for the industrial park plat, one oh nine dash block one thirteen dash lots thirty-two to thirty-five. That is a potential vote for the approval of purchase and sale of an agreement with Mr. Robert A. Lance Incorporated of Portsmouth. I think this touched the open agenda briefly. Was it in December? A few meetings ago, this body went into executive session on January seventh to consider this matter, and, and now it is back out in the open. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, we're coming up on a year dealing with this proposal. It has been discussed back and forth, both in executive session, you had a presentation from the proponent in open session, and the last time we spoke, I think you asked for the purchase and sales agreement to come back before the council, and I also committed to finding out what the condition is of the road, Progress Way in particular, in the industrial park, in terms of whether it's capable of supporting the very heavy truck traffic that might be generated by this project. So I actually spoke with Bill Anderson, the former DPW director, who is familiar with the design and engineering and the construction of the road, and he informed me that the road currently, and I think I've told this before, it only has the binder coat on it, it doesn't have the final coat. That binder coat is about three and a half inches thick, which is equivalent to the standard road specs here in Tiverton. The final thickness is supposed to be five or five and a half inches, so we do need to add that surface layer to it, which we should have done regardless. He also cautioned that it needs to be reviewed to make sure that, in the meantime, no additional deficiencies have cropped up, which I'm not sure is the case, although I, I did see some very heavy water trucks on that road a couple of times, so we're going to take a very close look at that, but he did believe that the road is meant to support, and he mentioned that it supported the truckloads that built the power facility. So from his perspective, yes, the road can handle it.
What would the cost to put the, the final coat on?
I meant to get that, I don't really have that, I don't know if Rick is here and has a estimate in his head of, you know, per linear foot, what it costs to put a finished coat on?
No, I'm just curious, because I just wanted to know what it would cost and where we'd get that funding from, but that's.
Right, all I want to say is that.
It would have to be.
I think it's obvious that the road was designed to be finished, not to be.
Oh, absolutely, so it'll have to be put into this budget.
And it has to be finished regardless of whether this project goes forward or not. I think it's going to be a couple of hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is my very rough estimate.
I was thinking about that, too, but I'm not a construction person.
May I ask a question about that? The, the top coat helps to protect the binder coat, correct?
Correct.
So that means that we should do this sooner rather than later. I mean, assuming that, you know, this all goes through, it will take, you know, the purchaser a little while to get their permits and build the building and everything else, but then they're going to want to start and have those trucks there, so.
So typically, I think you only let it sit for maybe winter so that it can settle, and if you have the time, you do it over the winter. So it's been longer than that, and we ought to do it sooner rather than later.
So, and we should try and get it done before?
Yes.
Before there's regular heavy.
If you approve of this and we move forward with this, then we need to start planning on doing that. And the good thing is that there's a lot of, you know, paving being planned, and, and also the company that we have selected to do a lot of the paving, did the paving in industrial way as well, so they're familiar with the lay of the land, and they can do it probably relatively quickly.
So, Jan, given that, obviously, at some point, we anticipated a finished road, and we have the binder part down, was there some money already sort of budgeted for this total road, or is this?
No, I don't think it was specifically budgeted. I don't know if the expectation was that the account that is there for the industrial park would be topped for that, I imagine it would, but we also may have to top the, the paving budget for the DPW.
I have a question. Is the whole road binder coated? Because I thought going into the power plant was not, it's a finished coat.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I thought just the industrial way going in, not Progress Way, was.
Industrial way is now, has, has everything?
Yes.
I believe going into the power plant.
As far as I know, all the way to the power plant is only the binder coat, but I may be wrong. It may be that very last piece.
They, they hold in those big generators, those had to weigh a lot of, you know, a lot of weight.
Right.
That's why I thought that that part was.
And that's what Bill was pointing out, that it was able to.
Yeah, that's.
Support the.
I could be wrong, but I thought just the road going in was binder, and the rest was finished.
But I, I do think it's important to also take his advice to heart that we carefully evaluate the road, take a good look at it, and have a professional engineer do that to make sure we don't just.
Right.
pave something over and then hope that it will work out.
Now, twenty-five percent of all the sale of the land went into that special account. I'm not sure what's in there right now. We talked about it the other day, but the figures are just, we're talking about so many figures, but it's okay, but there is some in there definitely.
Yeah, there is some.
Because we sold a couple of pieces of land that would have went in there, so that definitely, in my opinion, should go for that top coat.
I'm going to allow any, any public comment, if brief, if anybody have any thoughts on, would this be the third? I guess we count the power plant the fourth lot that we've sold in industrial park, if we agree with this?
Well, it's more than.
Progress?
Yeah, it definitely is.
Okay. All right, I think we have a recommendation on, from this, from the town administrator. Council, have you reviewed the contract?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement with Robert A. Lance Incorporated of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, for industrial park plat one oh nine, block one thirteen, lots thirty-two to thirty-five.
Second?
I think I, I said we had an open session, I think we, before that open session, had a presentation from the applicant, right? From the candidates, it's been out there at least twice. Okay, we have a live motion and a second, would anybody like to speak in opposition? Any further questions or comments from the public? Okay, second call? Okay, we have a live motion to approve the sale of the lots as presented, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, and thank you for your work to drive this home. So we'll talk more about accounts and paving.
Yeah.
Signature.
Okay, next up is item F one, which we moved up a little bit. Intern fire chief, Bruce Rummels, request approval for the transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the salary account to apparatus maintenance, cover completed apparatus maintenance account, continuing maintenance of vehicles for the next five months. I know we're very interested in talking about rescue equipment as well. Whichever, you'd like to go first, floor is yours.
I'm requesting to transfer fifteen thousand out of the chief's salary account to the apparatus maintenance account. I have talked to the town treasurer, and that is not going to affect if we, when we hire a, a new chief, we, we still have monies in that account for that.
Bree's presentation I've ever heard.
Thank you.
It was great.
I think what is probably important to say, although you could probably guess that we've seen significantly higher expenditures than were anticipated. It's my understanding, at the very beginning of the fiscal year, there were some very high expenses, close to like thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand dollars in the first three months or so, that ate into that immediately, and it's true that the, the record of incurring repairs has been somewhat challenging. You can't sometimes budget for it, it's just not always possible to predict, you know, what will happen or not. We have been trying to improve our capability to do the repairs in-house, we're fully staffed on the mechanics front, and we now have the equipment to better diagnose the problems, which is beginning to pay off. So hopefully, it will be more under control, but even so, with these kinds of vehicles and equipment, it's, it's somewhat difficult to predict, and I'm actually pleased that so far we can offset this within the department's budget.
Question. Is this money to be used to repair the rescues that we have?
About the rescues, that's even same point I wanted to make, and I've made it to the media when they inquired about this as well, that very difficult to predict what happens. We have a range of age in our rescue trucks, from the oldest from two thousand and eight to the newest, two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and eight is the reserve, and then in the middle, there's the two thousand and twelve one. The most recent repair, the most recent occasion on which the rescue went out, was the newest one. So it sort of shows like, well, what's going on here? It can happen with any of them, and we didn't know exactly what that was until we had the diagnosis done a couple of times, and it turns out to be a relatively small problem. We're lucky, it's not going to be out for weeks or months, just a matter of a part being ordered, and then it will get fixed, and we'll be back on the road. There are somewhat larger problems with the older equipment, where apparently for the reserve truck, we were told last year that the cost of the repair. reserve truck, we were told last year that the cost of the repair exceeds the value of the truck. So what do you do in a circumstance like that? The middle truck, we're looking at a repair that has been estimated to cost about $8,000. And again, the entity that did the inspection and the estimate raised the question whether it was worth it to spend $8,000 on that particular truck. I think in that instance, it does, because it's a 2012 truck.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's a 2012.
We can't really afford to keep replacing at that rate. But even so, we're looking at some serious expenses on trucks that you don't necessarily expect to have those expenses on, and that's just something that, again, very difficult to predict. I think it's reason to look at, you know, are there any ways that we can reduce that kind of record of deterioration or damage or repairs or whatever? So we certainly will look into it, but that's where we currently are. So my expectation, and Bruce can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we will keep going with certainly the two, and that more likely than not, we'll have to decide that it's not worth spending the money on fixing up the reserve truck.
What's the turnaround time if you were to order a new rescue? How long does that take?
Probably two years.
No, not two years. Yeah?
No. Hopefully, no is near two years, if I'm allowed.
Isn't there an ambulance park of dealership I can go to?
It all depends on what kind.
It's a few months, isn't it?
Yeah.
It takes a little while.
Three to four months, I think. Right now, I've been looking at, we've, for the past four or five rescues, we've been getting the bigger chassis. Right, I've been looking into, and I have some quotes for the smaller chassis, which the trend now is to go back to the smaller ones. If that's the case, that's probably close to 80, 90,000 cheaper.
So 240, 250?
Correct.
With the onboard equipment?
Some, some equipment, not, certainly not at all.
Is there only one maker of ambulances? And I know this might be a foolish question, but is it...
No, there's...
There's several, right? So maybe we should be looking into other people that make them, considering...
Who's been doing that?
We have a 2016 that already needs work. I mean, it's just...
That 2000, 2000, rescue two, the newest one, the 16. The scanner tool that Highway just got, the mechanic was able to use that to diagnose what's wrong with that, just actually, just this afternoon. So that's what Jan was talking about. It's relatively cheap money to get a fix, and it should be back, hopefully, tomorrow.
Perfect.
If we, yeah. Yes. If we, if the part can get delivered tomorrow, it'll be back in service tomorrow.
No, I wanted to ask, the budget that you submitted includes money for rescue. Is there, given urgency and that sort of thing, is there some reason to look at trying to purchase something sooner than that? Or in both your opinion, is that adequate soon enough?
Yeah, I'm not going to get an argument from me. That's a fact.
Well, if we fix rescue one...
The 12 and the 16.
Yeah, if we fix the 12 and the 16, and then pick up a new one. But the 12 and 16 should be okay for now, as long as we spend the 8,000 and whatever.
16 should be.
Right. The 16, yes, absolutely, and the 12, which is rescue one from South Tiburon, would go into the reserve status.
With the new one coming onboard.
When the new, right, exactly.
How long to repair that one, the rescue one? We don't know.
I don't know. I don't know that. I'm not sure.
We can order it as soon as you approve the capital budget.
It wouldn't be us, it would be...
Maybe the FTR.
Well, that's my question. I mean, there are multiple avenues to spend money, and all of them come with different legal questions.
Yeah.
I mean, we could go right out and buy one as an emergency. We could try to do it through an FTR for this fiscal year, which would get the money approved in May, or we could wait until July 1st, which is the fiscal year. Unless there's some mechanism to order it when the money is essentially appropriated, so that you don't have to, so if it takes three, four months, if the FTR approves it, you order it the next day, and is that how it works?
Yeah, we've done that before. The minute it's approved, we order it, because we know the funds are coming and they have been approved by the people. So we have done that before with the fire trucks and the rescues.
It just so happens that the sale price for the industrial park lot is awfully close. Just saying.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
At least they're both in the same universe of capital.
There's a lot of people that would want that too.
Quite sure.
I can't remember. Some of the industrial park, it goes into the...
25%.
Awfully nice down payment.
You've got to pay for the roads.
But we also have some money in our district account currently.
Yeah, 300 and something we have in the paving.
Okay. So from a public safety perspective, it sounds like first coming tomorrow, feeling okay.
I just want to, if I may, just give Bruce some credit for being very cautious about how to approach this and do the comparisons and do the homework to figure out what is the most cost-effective way to go. I think that is an encouraging sign, so...
Thank you, Bruce. I know it's been a nightmare. Thank you.
I'll move to transfer $15,000 from account number 3310-5100 to salary to account number 3310-7640, apparatus maintenance.
Second.
Live motion on the floor. Any further questions or comments? Second, need a second?
Yes, me.
Okay. All of us in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bruce, get him, Bruce.
Okay, that puts us back into the regular order, which takes us to Part D, appointments and resignations. We have, we've already done interviews here. We start with the planning board. We have two vacancies, but one and only one applicant. So that'd be Miss Amanda Souza. We had the chance to interview her, and I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
I'll move to appoint Amanda Souza to the planning board for a two-year, unexpired, in fact, for an unexpired three-year term to expire July 15th, 2021.
We need seconds on these nominations?
Yeah, you do need seconds.
How?
Yeah, I'll second it, and I was thinking the same thing. Is Amanda here?
A second will never hurt, but all right, so the second will be...
Just to bring it back, we had asked her...
Is Amanda here?
She had, I don't know, we had asked her if she had gone to a planning board meeting in the meantime by the time...
She did. I can confirm that she did attend the planning board meeting.
She did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw her on tape, because I watched it somewhere. Yeah. Someone was recording it.
She did. I actually confirmed that myself.
Okay. All right?
Okay. We have a live motion in a second. Any further comments, questions? Okay. All of us in favor? All right. Thank you very much. And our other item is switching over from the planning board to the library. A couple things. First, we have the corrective action plan, giving some of the staggering. So we're going to want to pause on that, and then I just wanted to briefly remark that we sort of have this wonderful problem where we have more applicants than vacancies, and that puts us, it's wonderful that there's that level of interest support, and then of course, it's very, very difficult to select. I think we've all been there before, but I do want to make sure that however this turns out, we certainly extend the appreciation for those that are willing to apply and come forward and put themselves into some scrutiny. And having said that, so who wants to talk about this corrective action plan before we get into the candidates?
Well, since I brought it forward, in looking at the, at the appointment process, I noticed that the state law calls for basically three groups of library trustees, one third of each of whom would expire, their terms would expire each year. So in essence, every year, you'd be appointing roughly a third of your board. We've gone off of that somehow. I asked the clerk to give me a history of appointments, and she was able to go back to 1994. Already, there weren't thirds, but at least there was something every year. Sometime about a decade ago, that went off, and now it's two groups with a year of no appointments. It appears that's what's happened, is in the past, when there's been an appointment for an unexpired term, they just started the clock at three years, which is clearly not what the statute, Rhode Island General Law 2945 calls for. So just the easiest, most efficient way to get back on track, I thought, was to make our two current vacancies good through October 15th, 2020, and then we're right back compliant with state law.
So if we have two for 220, then the next year we do three, and the next year...
Yeah, so there are two terms expiring this year in October, and then two the next year, and then three the next year, and then we're back to those in a cycle.
And that state law is 29-4-5.
Right.
Okay. You've looked, you signed off on this? Okay.
It's right here. We have it in the package.
29-4-5.
And with that said, I'd like to make a motion to open up discussion, to appoint to terms under the corrective action plan to expire October 15th, 2020, both Kim Sutherland and Richard Rahm.
Still not sure if I need a second, but will there be one, so I don't have to figure that out?
I'll second it, and I'm not sure, are we, so we're talking first before...
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
We have a live motion on the floor at the moment.
The way we usually...
Is this a nomination? How would you suggest we proceed?
The way we usually...
Sorry, it's an appointment, but the, if you have a pending motion, you have to resolve that motion prior to any further motion.
That's not the way we routinely do this. Everyone puts the motions for who they'd like up on the floor, and then we vote according to order, and that's the way we've always done it as long as I've been here. So like, if I made a motion for someone, then someone else can, and someone else can, and then we go in that order, but all the motions go on the floor right away, so that we can discuss other candidates that some of us might want.
That's the procedure for officer nominations, right?
No, that's the way we've always done it for these appointments. Nancy? Yes, I know.
We very rarely have three have more candidates than spots, but we've always taken the mic one by one.
Right, and then we vote one by one.
Maybe we've always done that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I... Maybe we didn't do it the right way, but that's the way we all did it.
I appreciate the precedent, but I'm not sure, you know, the statute calls for an appointment, and an appointment, it would typically be done by a motion and vote. I'm not sure why it would be done differently.
So we'll make sure that everybody gets to...
We couldn't nominate somebody that, until that motion's defeated? Is that what you're saying?
If the motion's defeated, then you can submit a motion to nominate or to appoint alternates.
Or you could amend the motion.
Okay.
Do you amend the main motion?
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion.
You can...
No, only the president who made the motion seconded.
But if that's the case, then, then don't these two names have to be separate motions? Because that doesn't, don't, doesn't...
It always has.
Have to be two separate motions? In other words, a motion for one person and a motion for the next person?
That would be a motion to divide the question, right?
Perhaps, but I'm not, I'm not sure it does. I don't know why it would, but I can certainly take a second and see if I can identify some...
Because essentially, then, it's making it, you're not getting to vote on each person. You're making it a package deal.
Right, so as the chair points out, you can, you can move to divide the question and ask for that to be done separately, which is then a motion to be approved by the board.
I would, I would like to ask the chair to separate the motion. I mean, I have to admit, I have never seen a case where we've ever nominated and voted on people as a block. I mean, it's always...
My understanding would be if I made an amendment, we would have, we would vote on the amendment. If the amendment failed, then we'd go to the main motion. That's what I always understood.
But I think you also, as a matter of procedure, could move to divide the question if there are groupings that, so you could get to there with the same spot. But I promised you this, and actually, I promised the public this, may, why don't we allow the four open forum people to speak? I guarantee that everybody can speak to all the candidates. If you want to check on Robert's rules and make sure we're speaking clean on this, we'll come back to you before we do any voting. Is that, is that okay? And I think everybody can speak to all of the candidates. But we've got our Robert rules out and everything. Okay. This is why I'm going to brush up on this. Okay, I'm going to allow, so in the order of priority here, Ms. Barbara Martin?
Yep. Neck Road, Barbara Martin, Neck Road. The town council has received 26 letters of support for the two candidates that the library board of trustees had, has recommended for the two vacant positions on the library board. The council has received no letters of support for the other candidate that applied. I fervently hope that the town council listens to all the citizens it represents and votes for the two candidates the library trustees feel are most qualified for the job. If you vote instead for the other candidate, it will be crystal clear that you only want people on boards and commissions that support your agenda, and not people who believe in and support the work of the board itself.
I believe I'm second. Maureen Newmehara. I already sent in a detailed letter to the council indicating my support of Ms. Cody and Ms. Sutherland for the library board positions. I don't have time to mention all their qualifications, but it's obvious Ms. Cody and Ms. Sutherland are coming to the table with more relevant skills and experience than Mr. Rahm. Despite this, one of the council members indicated at the interview that Mr. Rahm would still be an asset to the board as he had a different point of view to share. But I would also include that Ms. Cody would have a different point of view. She's new to the town and is part of a different age demographic, and would have a different perspective for the library. I think Mr. Rahm has passion about the math program, and that's very admirable, but I don't think he needs to be involved in the library board to do that. He could do that outside of that. I do want to take time to express some concerns about Mr. Rahm's interview. Let me list some of the quotes that he stated that concern me. I have not spent much time in the library. If that's the case, how can he fully understand and appreciate the needs and assets of the library? Ms. Cody and Ms. Sutherland are frequent visitors to the library and have a better understanding of the mission and needs of the library. It's not going to be easy for them to get stuff through. He also indicated, I like confrontation. Confrontation gets things moving. In speaking about his interview from the library board, he indicated, I knew there was going to be a confrontation, and it was fun. I got out there and I felt refreshed. I am very concerned. Mr. Rahm appears to want to be obstructive and antagonistic in his role on the board. This is stark contrast to Ms. Cody and Ms. Sutherland, who reported a love and support of the library. If his confrontational style is as effective as he indicates, then I would think it would have turned the heads of the library board. It didn't. They interviewed all three appointees, and they indicated a great support of Amanda Cody and Mrs. Sutherland, and they hinted a great concern about Mr. Rahm. I would hope the recommendations and the marked concerns of the board, who are obviously intimately aware of the needs of the board and the library, will be taken into serious consideration. Now, I particularly want to speak to the majority members of the town council, who during the interview process seemed to be in favor of Mr. Rahm, and who are also part of a local organization called the Tiburon Taxpayer Association. I checked out on your website, and I was, I was appreciative of the admirable stated goals that you have. One of them is to lower taxes and to save money. If you truly support lowering taxes, saving monies, I would think you would support Ms. Cody and Ms. Sutherland. They have grant writing experience, which could save the library and the town some money. Mr. Rahm, on the other side, was asking for a large sum of money for a special interest math program. I would be surprised if you did not take the financial savings into consideration for this appointment. Another really important and relevant goal that you have on your, on your website is to stand up for the average taxpayer against government special interests and insiders. If you're truly against government special interests and insiders, please show us that. Please do not support the appointment of a fellow TTA member who is not supported by the library, does not hold the impressive skill set of the other two candidates, and had several red flags during the interview. Listen, I get it. Everybody has their own personal agenda, right? But we hope that in the end, we look for the better good. And I hope that at the town council, that in your heart of hearts, you really do want what's best for the council, and I want you to try to show that, because it's obvious that these two, Amanda and Cody, have, have much more to give to the library and much more to give to the town, and Mr. Rahm could use his resources elsewhere. So I appreciate that all three candidates are willing to volunteer their time to be on the board. However, given the points indicated, and actually, the 26 letters that other people sent in, this huge packet... in, this huge packet of letters that people sent in, I hope you listen to them, and you appoint Amanda Cody and Ms. Sutherland. Thank you.
And the third person, Ms. Sousa?
Andrea Sousa, twenty-two South Avenue. I just want to point out that at the previous town council meeting where we had the interviews, per Mr. Rahm's own words, he, A, very seldom uses a library, ever. B, he says that he does not want his town dollars to support the library. C, he's not that great at writing, and part of this appointment is to do some grant writing. You have two very, very qualified people who are asking to be appointed to a library that they love, they support, and they want to see do well. I feel that if you appoint Mr. Rahm, all you will be doing is showing this town that you're willing to give political favors to those who support you. Thank you.
Okay, how'd you do? Do you have any flipping pages here? Let's have a debate on the Roberts' rules of order.
I'm not gonna debate anybody. It's just if you couldn't find it, I was looking for it.
I'm just wondering what the, which question?
I really don't appreciate your sarcasm, ma'am.
We'll let you speak. I just, I want to...
Which question are we, are we asking, I suppose?
Can I make an amendment to the motion?
You can't amend his motion without, without his agreement. You can ask for division of the, of the question, which would be non-debatable, and would be approved by a majority of the council, if you, if you would choose to divide it into two separate votes, if that's what I'm understanding you want to do. So it's not an amendment, but it's a call for division of the question.
And that's, that's not debatable?
Not debatable. Requires majority vote. But it requires a motion and a second. A motion, motion to divide and a second.
So keep thinking about that. I promised Ms. Rashley she'd be able to speak at this meeting, so I'm gonna turn the floor to her.
Jennifer Rashley. I live on Highland Road. I'm also a member of the Budget Committee. I am recommending that first you look at these candidates, or you vote upon these candidates one at a time. To combine the vote is a purposeful obfuscation. One is reappointment position, and then the other is for a new candidate. And so to combine the two is odd. The other thing is that I think it's, I think the town should be aware that there are members of you on the town council that patently don't like the library. It don't, my first year on the Budget Committee, Justin, Donna, Nancy, the three of you all told me that, after a meeting, that libraries were not necessary, that we didn't need one, and that you would entertain, you most certainly did. And you, you said to me that libraries, we don't need a free public library, that people who actually use them have enough money to pay for them anyway, and other people wouldn't use them.
I've never said that.
Well, I, I didn't write it down. It wasn't recorded. It was after a meeting. But I, I would like to draw attention that you have, you have not been in favor of supporting the library. There are many other disturbing comments I've, I've heard among you about repurposing the building. And I think bringing a candidate who, forward, who has indicated that he has actual antipathy for the library, and then in addition to combining the vote for these two candidates at the same time, instead of evaluating them individually, is a clear indication of, of wanting to mix it up and make it difficult to really look at these candidates individually. And I'm very concerned for the long-term future, that to look at a candidate who's already indicated that he's not a clear supporter of this most important American institution, the free public library, where all people are welcome to come. And, and when we live in an era where more and more, just to apply for a job, you have to have access to the internet and a computer. And for, for people who can only access that at a library, those, having those doors open to all is important. And looking, considering evaluating a candidate that, or, or voting for a candidate who has already let you know that he doesn't support the library, and where, when you have two other candidates that have considerable experience, this seems like a political chess move, not something, not, not, not something that you're doing to take care of this most precious and important institution. I would also add that I've heard, I've heard the library mocked among you, and calling it the Taj Mahal library, instead of looking at it, or cherishing it and taking care of it, as it should be. It's an, it's an important institution that everyone, everyone has equal access to. And schools are one thing. Schools are just for kids, right? But the library is for every single citizen in our town. We have to guard it and take care of it. And the people, the trustees who look after it, need to have the, the best intentions and the, the highest skill level. So I implore you to carefully consider how you do this vote, and to look out for your town. Thank you.
Yes? Go. Okay. Good evening, Sally Black, Broadview Drive. Just to reiterate what Jennifer said, if you want to look at the constitution of the, of Rhode Island, and I know we all revere that, public schools and public libraries are on the same line for support from the state. And when I went door to door and wore out one of my pair of golden shoes to get this pass, I heard a lot of people say, we don't need that. We have computers now. No one's gonna go there. Well, I just left there, and I couldn't find a parking place. And I'm very excited about that. I know we all use it, and we all should realize that it's a difficult part. When I went to the library one day, I'll tell you quickly, to get a pass to go to Boston Museum, the library was closed. I pulled in the parking lot on Tuesday. I'm like, why is it closed? And it was because of the budget, and everything else had happened. So I said, to my daughter, don't worry, I belong to a four river public library. She did. And we went there, and above, when we walked in, it says, the People's University. A city like Fall River that people make fun of. And it's open from nine till nine, because they know that everybody needs that. And so thank you very much for the support of our beautiful library. It's LEED certified, famous all over the state, and now the country. Now that I say that, thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public like to be heard on this, and that we're gonna, I think, have our debate? Perhaps starting with procedure? It's an open floor. Okay. Okay. Where are we on procedure? And then we will talk, as long as everybody gets a chance to talk twice at least?
I think what I'd like to ask is what Counselor Perry's intent is. If it's simply to divide the question, then I think division is the, is the, the motion that you'd, you'd put forward.
Does that motion need a second?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to divide the question.
It's not debatable.
Is it debatable?
It is not.
Am I allowed to allow debate, or I would be in...
No.
Get some complaint divided?
It's not debatable.
All right. Can I explain what happens if it's approved?
Yes.
If it's approved, then we will divide the nomination for the...
In fact, in fact, let me just clarify. Well, I, I think the, the chair should restate the question, so that everyone knows what they're voting on. I'm happy to, to, to explain it myself and have you ratify what I've, what I've explained. But I, my understanding is that Counselor Perry is asking that the two nominations that were in the main motion be taken individually, the two individuals be voted on separately.
Yes.
If the motion fails, then the main motion, we return to that, perhaps in any other action.
It's gonna fail.
If the main motion fails, then it'll be an open floor.
Correct.
And you're saying you cannot move to amend a motion unless the...
You, you can. I just don't think that's what Counselor Perry was, was asking for.
Well, if I amended the motion, then I could nominate two people that I wanted to nominate.
You could, you could.
And then we'd vote on the amendment first. If that failed, then we'd go to the main motion.
You could, you could, you can move to amend by changing the, the motion. So if you wanted to substitute names...
Right. I would amend the motion to say, I would like to nominate Kim Sutherland and Amanda Cody.
You could do that, yes.
And then...
With a second and a vote, yeah.
We wouldn't need a second for an amendment, correct?
You would. You would.
For, no, you would.
Okay. So that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to amend the motion.
So what's he amended now?
As a point of information, if the question is divided by that route, you could debate on each one, right? There's not just one debate and then two votes?
If, if the question was divided, then yes, you would, you could debate on both questions.
Separately, before each vote.
Correct. But under Counselor Perry's amendment, you would only have a single debate, if his amended motion proceeded. But if, if, if you want to do an amendment, Counselor Perry, and not, not division, then you should withdraw the motion, which has been seconded. You should withdraw your motion at this point for division. And if there's no objection...
Just a follow-up. If he moves to amend the motion, doesn't it then need a, and it passes, doesn't the new motion need a second? I'm having memories of the financial town meeting.
No, no, the new motion does not need a second.
Yes, it...
It is, that is, that becomes the main motion.
Yes. The amendment would become the main motion.
Okay.
Then they'd vote on that.
If Denise and I agree on something of procedure, I feel like we're probably right. At least...
Well, I didn't think someone could make an amendment on someone else's motion.
That I thought you could do, but I thought you needed a second motion.
You do need a second on an amendment, as far as I remember.
Correct.
But he can amend someone else's motion.
Anyone can amend anyone's motion after it's been stated.
Right.
Correct. You can ask for a friendly amendment prior to the chair stating the motion.
All right.
And that's a separate procedure, which is probably what you're, you're thinking of. And that's, that's something that, that can be done with consent of the mover of the main motion. But once it is stated by the chair and, and ready for debate, you can ask for an amendment.
So I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion to divide the question.
If there's no objection to that.
No, I second it. I'll have her second it.
So now, now we're back to the main motion.
I'd like...
Okay, I don't remember.
Right, she withdrew.
There's no objection. She, she...
No one's objecting.
Seconded the original motion, but it has been withdrawn without objection.
This is why we passed the financial town referendum on press.
So, so then I'd like to make an amendment to the main motion, to appoint Kim Sutherland and Amanda Cody to the library.
And is there a second?
Second.
So now there is an amendment on the floor, which is subject to a vote.
Right.
And I think that the agenda on all these motions is close enough, that any comments on any of the candidates is close enough. Do we agree on that?
Say that again. What?
I want to make sure we all share the view that anybody that wishes to comment on any of the three candidates is positioned to do so at this time.
Well, not at this time. I think you have to vote the amendment, and then in, in the, in the context of the main motion, you have debate still.
Oh, so we, we agree. If this motion to amend passes, that will, that does not conclude the matter.
Correct.
Okay, that's where Denise and I were.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand. I didn't understand the question.
So can I just, so I understand if, if this motion passes, then it's opened up to discussion, correct?
On, on the motion that Counselor Perry...
But we can talk about any of the three candidates during that discussion.
Well, I, I don't think you can, I think you can talk about the, the, you know, the candidates that are in, under debate.
Why don't we just do it my way?
The two.
But at that point, the debate would be serving the vote on the two candidates that Counselor Perry...
I can't, we just do it the way we used to do it.
Not the two candidates that I put forward.
No, but we should ask them to split the votes.
Okay.
We're a better, cleaner way to do it.
I hate to, I hate to overrule the advice of counsel, but I'm somewhat of the view that all three candidates are proper for debate on the, on the motion to discuss the amendment, because he's looking to amend to one of the candidates' house.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. I was speaking only, only at the time of the main motion. Once, once the main motion's there, then you're down to two.
So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to open up the floor now for discussion on all three candidates. I think we have a live motion to amend a main motion. We'll come back to the procedure at the end, but I think now's the time for everybody to have their say on any of the candidates. I'll give you the first. No? People don't like that idea?
I want to be able to talk before the main motion vote.
There will be another opportunity to, to discuss the main motion.
This point, you're debating the amendment.
I'm only going with what I've done for the years I've been here, is going along with the recommendation of the committees that brought the names forward, and I'm supporting their recommendation. It's hard to get people to volunteer, and if we're going, if we're not going to abide by the, the boards that refer these people and recommend them, then how are we gonna get people to volunteer?
So let me, I'm gonna try to be quasi-formal. So what I'd like to do, like, this is good, a brief introduction from the sponsor, the second, and then I'll give the floor to those in opposition. So the second on this motion to amend was...
Tricia.
Tricia? Do you have any further comments?
Well...
Introduction, that is.
No, because I, I seconded the motion to divide the question. That's the, that's what I seconded.
That's what I thought.
May I, may I, I just procedurally ask something here. And I'm just gonna be really blunt, so we don't spend forty-five minutes discussing motions. There are probably already, in, in this council's minds, a direction of how people want to vote. Mr. Katz made the first motion. He got a motion out on the floor, therefore, that's the first one to be heard. And he included two names in that motion. And philosophically, and hear me out on this, philosophically, I don't think, whether it's allowed under Roberts' rules or not, that when it comes to appointments to boards and commissions or individuals, that people aren't entitled to an individual vote. And I don't think it's right to do it in a block that way, and I don't think it's right to start that, because ultimately, it can be used for, let's call it, political shenanigans. It, it becomes a situation where, where, you know, you can bundle things together so that you force somebody into having to decide, well, I don't want to vote for that, but I do want to vote for this. And we've never done it that way, and I don't think it's really fair to the board and commission members who start applying. And if we go down this road, I just, you know, I think it's just a recipe for no one going to apply. And we desperately, desperately, desperately need volunteers on these boards and commissions. So I recognize the fact that Mr. Katz got the first motion on the floor and, and put two names forward. That, that's how it works. But I would ask to reconsider that we follow the traditional process, where each person's entitled to an up or down vote, and if the first two are the ones that get it, that's the way it goes. If it isn't, you keep going. But I just think that as a practice, there will be people who will not come and apply, because this turns into something where, you know, people are trying to organize their votes around, well, it, it, it's, it's bad medicine. So I would just please like to ask Mr. Katz if he would consider withdrawing his motion and having the opportunity to make the same motion, but as two. The nominate, the one, that's, you have that right, because you got the motion on the floor, and, and that we go with that. Because I just don't think this is right for, for, for the volunteers, and it, it's a bad practice to start.
Mr. President, may I respond? I just have a, I have, I have a thought that really bothers me, because in fact, it ended up meaning my husband, who applied for the Budget Committee, wasn't even brought up to vote, because his name happened to be third on the list. So the first... So the first two were brought up, voted on, and then that was it. And that's, that's just inherently wrong. There are three people who have applied, so whether we...
So you're saying that person never got that up and down vote?
He never got the up and down vote. So here's my...
The same, the same problem occurs then.
Here's, here's my question. If, if we're gonna, if we talk about them each individually, then we need to talk about each of the three and then take the vote. I don't like this, you listed the first two in order, and then the third one...
I think we're on the same page there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll let, I was gonna save my comments for the end, but, and then I'll let Mr. Katz speak for himself. But one thing that I find attractive about the combination is for those that have stood up here and taken shots at some of us about an agenda or special interests, what I find really interesting and attractive about this motion is that it shows the nature of a compromise. If there was, if there was...
Two.
If, if there was truly the type of allegations that some of you have alleged, then we would only appoint Mr. Rahm, and we'd leave the other vacancy unfulfilled, and so, but I...
Aw, come on, Rahm.
I'm just telling you, it does make sense. So, if, if that's the type of, so I'll let Mr. Katz speak for himself, but one thing that is interesting me, because one of the jobs that I try to do, which you can, maybe I, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, but is to try to find some type of consensus and some kind of middle ground. So I don't have any problem personally with voting on more than one person at the same time, because I happen to know then that there might be a chance for a compromise. So those are just my comments. I'll say the rest of mine to the end, and I don't know if you want to respond to the question.
Yeah, I did want to, I, I share the view that one of the reasons you would want to be able to combine parts of a question is because it does create that opportunity for two sides to come together and have the compromise package, so to speak. It's not necessarily political shenanigans, it's, it's how politics can be done. With regard to the question of whether people will apply, I, I think you, that cuts just about any way you want to slice it. I mean, we heard Counselor Jiggs talk about when the prior town council didn't appoint her husband, who was the next highest vote getter for Budget Committee, he didn't even get a vote. So does that discourage people from applying to join positions? I think it probably would. Does this process that has nowhere in law, where the, a board offers an official recommendation as if they're doing the hire or the appointment, does that process discourage people, given the treatment of Mr. Rahm? I would say it must. So I, I don't agree with either of those propositions.
Okay, I want to let Denise go as the second, and then I'm gonna open...
It's okay, somebody else can talk.
Okay, does any, we have, all right, so as a matter of procedure, we have a, a seconded motion to amend the main motion. And those that would like to speak in opposition to the amendment, now's your chance.
Will you state the amendment, please?
The amendment is to amend the main motion to appoint Ms. Kim Sutherland, I'm sorry, the main motion, which would have been to appoint Ms. Kim Sutherland and Mr. Richard Rahm, would be amended such that the two that would be voted on would be Ms. Sutherland and Ms. Cody. And the question, all will get to speak, but the question for speaking priority is those that wish to speak in opposition to the motion. Okay?
The amended.
The amended, the motion to amend the motion.
Right. Yeah, I'll say that I, I don't support this amendment. It's really just substituting another proposal to the one that was the first one moved, and therefore, I just don't support it.
Okay, so if this motion to amend passes, there will be a vote on the main motion as amended. If this motion to amend does not pass, we will revert to the original main motion. May I proceed to vote on the motion to amend? Is there any objection proceeding to vote on the motion to amend? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to amend the main motion? And those opposed? All right, we have a live motion on the floor, which is Mr. Katz's motion. I forget who seconded it. Is that, is that Ms. Jiggs? Okay. Okay, so brief, brief introductions from Mr. Katz and Ms. Jiggs, and then, then I'll hand it over to any councillors wishing to speak in opposition.
May I, may I hold on to my comments as a closing statement?
That's your, that's your prerogative.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Ms. Jiggs?
I'd like to do the same, actually.
Okay, would anybody like to speak in opposition to the main motion?
I, I, we've already stated our opposition, but I, I would like to say this. I think it's one thing to look at compromise on a budget, or a zoning ordinance, or something like that. I, I don't think that when you're talking about volunteers, I mean, this is not a Supreme Court nomination, you're talking about volunteers that when you start grouping them together and forcing group votes, I think you will find the pool of people willing to come forward shrinks ever smaller.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I think Justin and Nancy have reserved their comments, so I think if we have no further on, on my right, I usually save my comments for last, but I'm gonna allow Donna to speak, then I'll speak, and then I'll turn it back to the motion in a second.
Have some, some observations that this is about the third time that I've seen, me personally was attacked when I applied for the Personnel Board one time. We say we're very considerate of people, I don't see it. The next one I ever saw was Ms. Gill, that was terrible. And the third for me is the piling on and hysteria of Mr. Rahm. It's very sad that we do that. The hysteria over who was applying to the Library Board of Trustees, and an interview that should not have happened by a conflicted Board of Trustees, whose intent was to keep someone applying for the vacant position off the board, which by the way, has been vacant since January of 2018. The intent was to prejudice the interview process by the Town Council. The Library Board of Trustees and others appeared to have coordinated a smear campaign against Mr. Rahm via a hateful discriminatory recommendation bent on defaming his character. Looking at the ethics form that Mr. Rahm completed, it occurred to me that all that serve on behalf of the Town or the Library Board of Trustees has to abide with the Town's core values, integrity, and honesty. This is clearly stated in the employee's handbook regarding discrimination and harassment. He did report that the library, when he was Secretary on the CRC to us, that his ability to do his job post in the CRC agendas, that the library was interfering in his ability to post the CRC agendas, which by law was required by the OMA, Open Meetings Act, and the Secretary of State. Mr. Rahm was, has complied with the Town's core values. He's honest, has a lot of integrity, and has a willingness to serve on the CRC. In my opinion, Mr. Rahm has served with distinction, is hardworking, he's diligent, and easy to get along with and a pleasure to know. He has a very good sense of humor. I guess some people don't get that, but it is, he has a good sense of humor. Mr. Rahm's personal history as a child, which he said, I mean, it was kind of surprising that he admitted he had a learning disability, that he didn't like the library, was very honest. Because I remember as a child with libraries, you went to the library and you got books, you weren't allowed to talk, and you were hushed. There weren't any programs to go to. So he had a learning disability, so that's someplace he didn't want to go. That doesn't mean he doesn't want to take part in making the library better. So he wants to share his love of math with children at the library, and wants to introduce new programs to the public with the help of the library trustees with affordable programs. Mr. Rahm is, is to look at what has happened. Mr. Rahm is a success story and should be commended for persevering through this learning disability to become an electrical engineer with a Bachelor of Science degree from the, a California University. He is successful and accomplished individual who wants to offer his talent and knowledge to children in town and help them, help them on the road to success through the library programs. And what has happened is he has been totally trashed. I just don't understand it. It's really terrible thing. Also, looking through the Library Bill of Rights, and there is one, and it comes under free speech, the first thing that happened was that the Town, Republican Town Forum was, was violated by it being canceled, and I just, I'm just saying this just to let you know that what it says in Article Two of the Library Bill of Rights, it says materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval. Likewise, programs should not be canceled because of ideas or topics of the program or the views expressed by the participants or speakers. Article Five of the Library Bill of Rights, a person's right to use a library should not be denied or bridged because of origin, age, background, or views. Also, the library, although the public is a Town, the public library is a Town building, it does come under the Library Bill of Rights or free speech. Within the building, it does not come under Section 1218, which, under the 2016 shot of complaint, which Nancy and I didn't understand...
Isn't this a little off-topic?
It was then said that these type of programs could be. So the Code of Ethics of the Library Association, we protect each library user's right to privacy and confidentiality with respect to information sought, received, and resources consulted, borrowed, acquired, and transmitted. The interview crossed over the line. Rick's right to privacy and his use of the library was made public without his knowledge, and the interview made statements that were incorrect, reference to a file kept on him and defamed his character. And when he got those two papers from the file, it was referencing just maybe one line that, something about that forum. And we were thinking it had to do with the agenda, but it had nothing to do with him asking for the agenda to be put on. So I don't know all that, what Carol was saying about what was going on there, I have no idea, because it wasn't written anywhere.
She can't...
The policy concerning confidentiality of personal identified information about library users, I believe, has been violated when Carol Herman read a statement in public at the Town Council meeting regarding Rick's use of the library.
Yeah, this is, I...
Also stated in this article, in seeking access in the pursuit of information, confidentiality...
Excuse me, point, point of order. Point of order, this is off-topic.
I will have my say.
Well, you're off-topic, and you've already lasted over five minutes.
I can't interrupt anyone else.
But, but you're not discussing Mr. Rahm's appointment, you're discussing these other things at the library.
He's talking about the appointment process, which is, I think...
It's the appointment process.
Has direct bearing upon the, the interview process, so. We've allowed for hours and hours of discussion on this. I think Counselor Cook, who doesn't speak all that much compared to some of us on this council, can have...
Oh, that'd be us.
That's why we voted for him.
That would be us.
What's another member of the council?
In seeking access or in the pursuit of information, confidentiality is a primary means of providing the privacy that will free the individual from fear of intimidation and retaliation. Rick has been subjected to all of this by the library, by using the interview to allow for this breach. Therefore, libraries and librarians have a legal and ethical responsibility to protect the confidentiality of all library users, including foreign nationals. Libraries are one of the great bulwarks of democracy. They are living embodiments of the First Amendment, because their collections include voices of dissent as well as assent. Libraries impartial resources providing information on all points of use, available to all persons regardless of origin, age, background, and views. The role of the libraries as such a resource must not be compromised by an erosion of the privacy rights of the library user, which I feel was done.
Did you have a quick correction?
Just, yeah, just, I have a copy of the library incident reports, and she seemed confused by that, and I think it's important to...
I think to go forward, like I just said, it's already an invasion of his privacy.
It's a public record.
I'm a little concerned about, I'm a little concerned about the incident report. I, I think there may have been some serious violations with those, so I really do not want those brought up, or certainly not read into the record.
Is that the voice of the council, that it's not important to be aware of?
It's a public record.
I never said it wasn't important. What I said is that the, that the Board of Trustees may have abused its process, can't even bring this forward, but that's not the side of the party.
That's a public record, though.
I was just clarifying, because she didn't seem to understand that there was an incident.
Stop, you were...
Okay, so...
Why don't we just vote and get it over with?
I will leave it for another night to figure out the status of those incident reports in particular. Ms. Cook has had her say, I'm gonna have mine, and then I'll turn it over to the move on in a second. I just want to say for those that have come up here and sort of, as made these casting of aspersions at those with special agendas and attacking the Tiburon Taxpayers Association, which I'm a founder of that, I, I think it is in the public record that I am a library supporter, that when I was on the Town Council before, I voted to put that bond forward to the vote of the people, and I'm not sure that it's still on the website, but at once upon a time, I actually was asked and approved to have my picture and an endorsing statement out there in the public, and, and I still stand by that support, because as I understood it then, of course, the library is important, but I was particularly happy about the work that the Library Board and the affiliated organizations raised substantial amounts of money privately and through donations, and it was truly a partnership in a sense that I think was good for the community and good for the taxpayers. There's certainly room for reasonable disagreement, that was a very close vote, but one thing I, I don't think is fair is to suggest that, that, that this person has some kind of animosity towards the library. I do share the view, we've said it before, we've talked about this on the Charter Review Commission, where we talked a lot about reducing the size of some of the boards, that you don't need to be on the board to make a contribution. That goes equally for all the candidates, so I share that view. And I also agree, I guess what's really gnawing at me is that of all the places where there really ought to be a robust debate, I think Mr. Rahm used the word confrontation, which may, may, it might have been a better word to choose than that, but a, but a first, but a First Amendment right to, to different points of view is, is, would better place, right, than, than a library, so. And I would just, I would just ask that, I mean, I, I do have concerns about these incident reports, and I, I do have concerns about the character attacks, and I do have concerns about what appears to be, not with established precedent, at least on most of our boards, where, where boards are self-nominating, and I don't know that that's fair to, to any of the candidates, or fair to the council, or fair to the public. It's something I think we need to think about. I'm also concerned that Ms. Sutherland took a vote on, on a recommendation while she was self-on, while she was also on the board. I'm still going to support her appointment, but I, I'm just sharing some concerns. But I'll just close out with the sense of, as I attempt, as I attempt once again to try to find the perspective of a compromise here, okay? There's seven trustee slots, okay? There's seven. One has been vacant for apparently a year. This appointment, because of the corrective action plan, is for 18 months. I, I think if we wanted to, we could remove trustees from the board if there was really a problem, and in any event, the term is for 18 months. One out of seven people supported by professional staff is very unlikely. I, I just, I just offer that by terms of perspective here. This isn't the, the town administrator, this isn't a Supreme Court justice, this is one of seven citizens, who by the way, was elected, I should also add, by the Town of Tiburon, and he served as a secretary with me as an officer of the Charter Review Commission. And so he obviously had the support of the people, and I just, I know there won't always be agreement on this, but I see this as a compromise view for, for one of seven slots for 18 months in an organization. It's a fine organization that I have clearly supported in the public record, that's supported by professional staff. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I sort of want to pick up on some of what you said. I sort of approached this, looking at Ford, I approached it first looking at the governing law of appointments to the Board of Trustees of the library, and it's controlled by state law, which clearly indicates the Town Council appoints the Library Board of Trustees. And then, the charter is totally silent on the library. The next time you see it is in the Town Council's governance policy, adopted by the Town Council, last amended, I believe, in 2015. And in that policy, it clearly also states, "The Town Council has the authority to address appointments and interview applicants." Nowhere in either the state law or our Town Council governance policy does it give any role for the Board of Trustees to interview or recommend. And in fact, I went through the exercise of going through all the past minutes of prior appointments back quite a ways to the Board of Library, and there was never any indication of any backup letters from the Board of Trustees on any applicant, nor was there ever, except for one time, with Councilwoman Hilton, which was mentioned, but she didn't, she was actually sort of, she was misquoted. Because there were two qualified candidates, her actual words were, "I will defer to the recommendation of Greg Jones." She did not ask for his recommendation, he did not come before with a letter of recommendation. She just deferred, given there were two. That's the only time this has ever happened. So, fast forward now to this appointment. This Town Council did receive 26 emails to the Town Council. What was striking about some of these is that literally, the phrase used to describe one of the candidates was absolutely identical in quite a few of the emails, and just a tiny bit changed in some of the others. So, you can't tell me there wasn't a concerted effort to get these things out. Now, let me finish, please. Thank you.
Has everybody heard the same thing?
I was struck with, I was struck. But what I was struck with were how many of the cited statements by two of the candidates were cited, statements of two of the candidates, of the love of the library, their love of books, and their desire, therefore, to further the library's mission. So, at that point, I decided I took a look at the library's mission. The Tiverton Library has issued two long-range plans. The first one was approved on December 2013 and went through 2016. And you might be surprised to hear that in that vision, mission statement, what they spoke about was creating and strengthening community through being a lending provider of cultural resources and as a forum and venue for events. Now, think what happened to Mr. Rahm. In 2018 through 2023 is the second long-range plan, and the mission statement of the library in that one includes a statement that programs and services need to serve groups, individuals, and organizations. So, excuse me, so what I was struck by, both visions of the Tiverton Library itself were much, much broader than just books and the libraries of my memory as a child. Further, the 2018-2023 long-range plan had seven goals. These goals, this is the current long-range plan, include expanding library hours, programming, adult print books. They also included number five, improve customer service, which included being more the, the people at the library needed to be more visible and available to the patrons. And it also was meant to address comments that the library had attached to their long-range plan, that they had received, and comments like, "Staff is not nice, staff not friendly." One comment was, "The only friendly person at the front desk was John." Now, think again of Mr. Rahm. And number six was to look for, diversify and increase funding sources to meet the demands for these increased services they're talking about, at the same time, avoid adding to the polarization in town over property tax increases. So, it was very interesting that I then found, in the meetings of the Library Board of Trustees from February 15, 2018, a vote was taken, and I really want you to listen to this, to request level funding from the town for fiscal year 2019. That was last year. In light of the financial difficulties facing the town, including the school bond debt coming online. The minutes then went on, Library Board of Trustees, the board also felt, "We will be in a stronger position to justify a budget increase next year," that's this year, "when our new long-range plan has been implemented." I don't know if people know this, but under Rhode Island general law, if once the, once a town appropriates money for the library, its only choice next year is either to maintain that appropriation or increase funding.
Point of order. Rob, we're talking about the budget. Well, because we're talking about the budget now, we're not talking about these appointments.
Excuse me. Finally, the Town Council governance policy allows the Town Council-
Just a second, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask the videographer, you're going to tell me if you can't hear her, okay? Or if anybody in the audience can't hear, otherwise I'm going to have to, going to have to put a stop to this. And see, these kind of comments and this kind of environment is exactly why some of us are supporting a candidate that's willing to stand up to it.
Oh. So, thank you for telling us all how you're going to vote.
Why don't we just vote?
I'm almost done.
Why don't we just vote?
Move the vote.
I'd like to move the vote.
We are going to let Mr. Driggs finish, and then Mr. Katz, and so the only question for you is how long you want to stay.
Finally, the Town Council governance policy allows the Town Council to weigh the need to staff boards with varying levels of experience, to ensure long-term continuity of knowledge, allow for new volunteers, and fresh perspectives. I don't know if you're aware of the fact that, right now, four of the seven board members are at least in their second or third-year term, some longer. And Leon Hoyer, when asked for his reappointment for one year only for a third term, asked for one year only, and I'll quote him, because he said, "It's good to have turnover every six years in any volunteer organization. It brings fresh ideas." For all of the above reasons, the fact that it is the Town Council's decision alone to make, the fact that the library mission and vision is much broader than books and love of library, and creates, includes creating a forum and venue for events and organizations, the fact that the town governance policy urges new volunteers who can offer fresh perspective, and probably most crucial to me, the fact that the library has historically sought increased funding from the town, and seems to want to have to set the, have to set the stage to justify an increase this year. They haven't come before the Budget Committee yet, I don't know, but, so, to me, it is important to have a fiscally responsible person with a known concern about the taxpayer as a voice on the Library Board of Trustees. I think it's imperative. So, I do plan to vote for Richard Rahm. And as I said last week, and I was not fully quoted, which I'm sorry about, I did work with Richard for a year on the Charter Review Committee. I got to know him well. He has beliefs, he has strong beliefs, but he is not foolhardy or irrational. He listens and is receptive to other ideas, and respectful, and always pleasant. Thank you.
Okay, Justin, I think you get the last word.
Okay. At the beginning of this process, I was supportive of Mr. Rahm's appointment for one big reason, and it actually has a lot to do with what Ms. Rashley said about libraries are places where all people are welcome to come. I think it's safe to suggest that Mr. Rahm, in his activities publicly and having run for office, represents at least one-seventh of the people of Tiverton, and those people deserve a voice on the board of the library. If you look back at the recent history of the library, in 2016, they used library space, I guess allegedly, to advocate for a budget. In 2017, and this is interesting, I encourage everybody to go back and read through their meeting minutes, you can tell palpably, they were giving a hard time to the Charter Review Commission to use their space. In 2018, I'm sorry, 2016 again, the Library Board of Trustees had their lawyer to fight against the charter complaint related to the public advocacy, say that the library is not part of the town charter. And then in 2018, there are two incidents where the library rescinded with short notice meetings from a particular group, the Tiverton Republican Town Council Committee. One of them, they decided in the morning that they had double-booked the room, and so they waited until people started to show up at night to set up for this large event, and then told them.
It was moved.
So, it was moved to a space that was too small for the event. In any event, there was plenty of time to provide motion. But looking at this history, and some of the reactions I've personally seen and received from people participating in the library, it's kind of a reversal of the truth to suggest that we only want people who support us on a commission. This is one out of seven. The impression you get is that not one single person who agrees with them in a substantive way counts. To them, those neighbors don't count. Go find something else to do. We don't get a say. And that's why we get the library thinking it's appropriate to use a recommendation letter for character assassination. That's why I read Facebook posts from people who are involved with the library and the schools, saying that, this is a quote, "Mr. Rahm does not like the library because he is ashamed he cannot read, and was ridiculed because of it." Then we get the Secana Times with an editorial saying, without any context, that Mr. Rahm isn't much into reading, period. And then, on a false report from the own paper, said, "What he does have is a simmering resentment against the library dating back to a dispute set off when the library declined to let them post a flyer for political event." That's just not true. It's not what happened, and to assume a motivation on his part is entirely inappropriate for a community newspaper. And it is this shameful attitude, this shameful attitude, that confirms to many people that those of us who disagree just don't count, and we must, that we're not supposed to get a voice, and we must stand up to bullies. We do count, we do have a voice, and you should work with us rather than finding new lines to draw in the same. And so, I commend Mr. Rahm for his courage, and I suggest, if the vote goes the way I suspect it will, if anybody does anything at all to impede your full participation in this library board, please come back to us, and we will look into whatever legal means we have to force them to include you. And I will move the vote.
Mr. President, I do have one point of order. Since Mrs. Driggs did mention me, I would just like to clarify regarding the previous request for a recommendation from the library. I'm not sure that Mrs. Driggs saw the minutes from both, but, well, I was actually there, so we did interview two candidates. They were both wonderful, and we then asked, could we please, and I will admit, we probably didn't use the word "recommendation," but we asked, could we hear from the library? Do they have an opinion? Would one of these candidates have more skills or another? So, we didn't vote that night, and we waited until the following meeting, where we did get a recommendation from the library, hence my statement that night, I would defer. So, we, it was actually the council that solicited the library for a recommendation, just to clarify that. Thank you. Point of order also, Rob, I read from my little book here, as you called it, and it does say that if someone, if a member calls for a move of the motion and gets a second, then there should be a vote, and debate stops. Of course, it would have been a four-three, not, my motion would have failed, but I think I had, I had the right to move the motion. It's right here in my little yellow book.
You definitely can't do it wrong, somebody's speaking. It's in my bigger book.
I don't think I disagree.
Oh, my book's bigger than your book.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make a, I just want to make a little response. That's good.
It's fine.
I have the exact quote from the minutes, if you want.
The reason I, the reason I want to look at it is because I, you know, I think we need to look at the board and commission, the board and commission policy and have a longer conversation about how we feel about this practice. Okay, we have a live motion on the floor. A live motion on the floor is to appoint Ms. Kim Sutherland and Richard Rahm until October 15, 2020. I do have a question, since there was, I guess, some procedural issue about Ms. Sutherland being in office, even though it wasn't technically, this will just cure that and ratify any gaps from the prior appointment. Is that, is everybody going to be good with that?
Which seat?
On Ms. Sutherland's seat, I guess the, the last, the term was supposed to have ended, and she has stayed in office past the expiration of the term, and I just would like the record to reflect that we are ratifying that so that there isn't some issue there.
Yeah, the, I think, I think it's, I believe the statute is silent as to whether you remain until you're reappointed or replaced, so I think with that comment to the, to the motion, unless there was some, you know, challenge to a vote of the Library Board of Trustees during that period, I don't think you're at any risk.
Okay.
But I, but I think as a matter of practice, you may want to get ahead of the expiration of terms.
Okay. So, I'm not hearing any objections, so if the minutes could reflect that as well. Okay, I'm going to proceed to a vote. This is on the unamended main motion to appoint Ms. Kim Sutherland and Mr. Richard Rahm to terms ending October 15, 2020 pursuant to the corrective action plan. All those in favor? And are there any opposed? And are there any abstentions? So, I'm going to mark that as four, one, two. Is that at the seven? Okay. And I want to, I think I can speak on behalf of all of us, express my gratitude to the other applicant who I think was also put in unfortunate position here, and I hope that she doesn't give up on staying involved.
This is shameful, shameful, absolutely shameful.
Take a recess. I think the way candidates are treated are shameful, just terrible.
I agree with you that the process has been shameful, so we just have to-
Maybe you should take a recess, so that-
All right, we'll take a five-minute stretch break. Thank you. Let's move on. This is Mr. Provost's request for a sanctuary city ordinance, and if I have this right, if the council decided to take action, this, of course, we would not adopt an ordinance tonight, we would then spring into gear the process that one would go about to adopt an ordinance, which requires some back and forth with the town solicitor, I think, and some public notice and open, and a full hearing. Having said that, I did promise to Mr. Provost that we would have a hearing tonight, and therefore, I am going to allow comments from the public or anyone like to hear on Mr. Provost. And I understand this at least had a brief introduction of the prior council. One preliminary concern that I have is that I'm in receipt of a memorandum produced by the prior town solicitor, and it was provided under attorney-client privilege, and I guess, first of all, it strikes me as the type of memo that was not appropriate because, for a privilege, because it didn't involve litigation or threaten litigation. And so, the first question I want to know is, does all, did all seven of you have access to this memorandum that I have seen?
No.
Okay. Okay. And then, I guess the question is, why in the world would a question of policy that doesn't involve litigation have a memo that was put under privilege? To me, that, at least in the first instance, strikes me as questionable. It's one thing to say, this is a litigation matter, this is a sale of something, or this is, you know, an investigation into a complaint, but if it's a question of, Mr. Provost wants an ordinance, and there's some legal reason why we shouldn't give it, why would that not be discussed in the open? be discussed in the open? Now, I'm asking you, you're not here, you're not the authors, but...
It was never rediscussed, it was, it was never brought back up.
Yeah. Tony was looking into what the federal regulations were on that, and he was going to get back to us.
But why would that be under privilege?
It wasn't under privilege, it never came back to us.
The memo says attorney-client privilege.
I nev, did you ever see that?
Right, so, I guess, one of the concerns I have is if someone like me says to you that we have advice from the last, at least the last solicitor, and, you know, there's, lawyers are, want to change their mind from time to time, or don't always agree, it turns out, but, I want to release that memo. I don't, it doesn't involve litigation, and I don't know if I can put our current solicitor on the spot, if he's produced a memo, if he shares a legal opinion, if we can release that memo without being accused of some kind of breach of something. But we have a policy request, and a legal opinion was prepared on a policy request that has no litigation, and I don't understand why that was withheld from the public.
Privilege is yours to waive.
But why would we, why, why was it withheld, and nobody, does anybody know on the table why that would be the case?
Mayor?
Please.
I just have to say that although I didn't always agree with Tony on everything, one thing I'm absolutely convinced of, that he did very consistently, is tried to protect the council and the town from all kinds of adverse claims. And sometimes, that meant, in a case like this, because it's a communication between the town solicitor and the town council, that his presumption is this is privileged, and as your current solicitor says, it's yours to waive. What I have a little bit of a problem with is sort of the insinuation that, you know, the previous solicitor had bad motives, or, you know, didn't do the right thing. I did, I think he did exactly the right thing, and I personally appreciate, you know, how consistent he was in trying to protect the town.
We, we never went into executive session to discuss this memo, I can tell you that, it's not on the executive, it was never, but it was, did you ever find it on an agenda? The subject on the agenda? No, we never went in that back room to discuss that.
Right, so, just a pointed information, can we discuss technical aspects of the document without leaving, like, say, a date that it was published, or something, or provided? Or is that under the privilege umbrella?
I don't, I don't think that, that drafting the date would, would have any impact.
Okay, because this, it's dated December 14th of 2018, so this is something that would have happened while we were, and, so I think maybe this is a response to a question when Mr. Provost was here the last time. That might be why this was drafted, why it's privileged, that I can't answer, and I'd be happy to waive that.
Yeah, and I don't think this is about motives, or, it's just, I think this gets to this larger question of legal, of legal services, of, there's no doubt about it, that any time a lawyer talks to a client, it can be put under privilege, but I don't know that it should be in an open setting. So, did you have, did you, can I put you on the spot? Have you reached your own independent conclusion on this? Do you have an opinion? Do you want more time? Should we just discuss it as a matter of policy, or?
In terms of whether this particular memo should be?
Well, if I have a memo from, from someone that tells me that it would be...
I've, I've read the memo, I haven't made a legal assessment of it, to see, to say, I can't tell you, I agree with each point that Tony made, although I generally would expect that he was accurate and thorough. I, I, in terms of reading it to suggest that I have any concerns about liability if you were to waive privilege, no, I don't. I think the, the general, you know, it's a policy question, this is not about litigation, this is not about negotiation. It's not, it's not even the kind of thing that you would necessarily be able to bring into executive session and have sealed. So, I would, I would see no problem in, in having the public have full access to that, and the information that's contained in it, you know, which I'd be happy to assess separately. So, you know, without speaking to the content, I think as a matter of process, you know, making that public is not a legal issue.
I share the view that it's purely a policy question, so I, I don't take these things lightly, but I, I think this is a pretty good example of where we should release the memo, especially if we're going to deny Mr. Provost the relief he requests, he probably ought to see, or, not the relief, but the proposal he requests. Okay, well, maybe what we should do is start the conversation, and then we'll come back to this. I assume you haven't seen this memo?
No. And I suppose, that's what I find surprising.
And I have seen memoranda from solicitors that have not, so, we have to come back to this on legal services, is every single memo that came out, comes out from a solicitor is not always privileged? I know that's not true, and that hasn't been the practice, but maybe that should be the first practice, at least for a period of time, as the town administrator says, to be consistent. But I'm inclined to waive this. Is there, does anybody have an objection to that?
What, reading?
To, to, to release this document to the public? And as, as, actually, you pointed out, this did come in under our watch.
I don't have, but I have a question, who was that sent to?
Yeah, because we didn't even get it in our packet.
To the town council.
But we didn't get it in this...
It's in your, it's in your, well, it's in your privilege packet, right?
It was in our privilege. Okay, it was in there. But it is dated December, so, because while this council was here.
It was provided to you previously, and...
I haven't seen it, so I don't know which...
If I'm not mistaken, the reason that he decided to say this is attorney-client privileged is because we're dealing with a topic that could be controversial, and at the time, the council had not discussed, you know, its perspectives on that, and so, I think he just took the cautious route. But that doesn't mean that he insists it has to be kept confidential.
Do I need, I don't know that I, I think we need to release this memo, I don't know, do I need a vote on that? Am I allowed to take a vote on that with the agenda? Am I allowed to just read it, because you can't stop me? What do I, what do I do here? Unless I hear a strong objection, I...
I object to reading the whole thing.
I think you could just ask, you know, without objection, that this be included in the public record.
All right, will there be an objection to that?
No.
All right, we have a memorandum, at least this one's dated December 14th, from the town solicitor's office, to the town council. The subject is proposed immigration protection ordinance. I will not read the memo, but I will tell you the conclusion. It says, "Because the General Assembly has not provided enabling authority or otherwise addressed this issue, the town council has no authority to act, to, I'm sorry, to enact the municipal immigration protection ordinance." I want to discuss the merits, but I just don't want to sandbag you and tell you that we, you know, this secret memo exists, so I'm trying to be transparent about this.
Appreciate it.
This is now a public document, okay? And I'm going to let you have the mic finally, thank you.
Well, I have a thing to read here, but you screwed me all up, you know?
I bet the ACLU doesn't necessarily agree with this, but that's why they would want the opportunity to reply to the memo.
Well, I want to thank all of you for allowing me back in, and scheduling me when you said you would, I appreciate that very much. This is for the third time, but I am requesting the town council enact a town ordinance that would convey to the federal government our absolute displeasure with how the federal government is handling the practice of separating immigrant families, mothers from their children specifically. I understand that the sample ordinance is extensive, but it is written to convey our thoughts that the federal government is absolutely wrong, and they should stop their illegal practices of detention camps and separating families. Just today, and this is today, both the states of California and New Mexico are removing their National Guard troops from the board duty because of the harsh treatment being handled, handed out in the detention camps. All of a sudden, we're faced with something like this, a terrible, terrible decision enacted by our federal government. There are certain rules and regulations that we all have to follow, but there are also devices to allow us to go forward and say, "Listen, you guys, you're doing something incorrect." I think it's illegal, but incorrect is good enough for me. I've given you all a copy of the basic ordinance, I sent it via email, I assume you all have it. It would be a fill-in-the-blanks, identify who we are, I hope that makes it easy for you. We are not alone in doing this. Our state, state of Rhode Island, has already made their position quite clear. This immigrant fiasco perpetrated by the federal government is wrong. Along with our state, hundreds of other towns, cities, and states have already come forward stating the same thing. But it's not enough. We also need to let our voices be heard, both collectively and as individuals. This action by the federal government is absolutely hideous. Anybody, and I don't care who you are, that thinks you can take somebody's child from ages one day to whatever maturity is, 16 or 18, away from their mother, for no valid reason, is wrong. And I think we, in Tiverton, should add our voices to this. It's just a foul, disgusting way of doing business, and it should be stopped. As far as the punitive damages are concerned, that the federal government is threatening we enact such a thing, they've already been shot down twice by federal courts, saying you can't do that. These people have the right to free speech, and they have the right to say you're doing something wrong. You know, that went fast, I never thought that would come out. But I want to thank you again for your time, and I hope to persuade you, the town council of Tiverton, to do the right thing. Your votes will help correct a terrible stain on the soul of America. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, if I say yes to her, do you say you want to speak?
Well, I just, I'll let, something like Counselor Driggs, I just wanted to emphasize, I did promise open public comment on this, so anybody that wants to be heard on this, on the audience, will be heard. For now, Counselor Driggs?
Excuse me, I was just interested, when you said the state of Rhode Island has taken, done something, what have, what have they done?
They have said that this is incorrect, and the state is a sanctuary state.
The General Assembly has...
I couldn't tell you that. I can find out for you.
Well, I can find that out, too, I just wondered if you knew.
Uh, excuse me, I do have a question for you. Are we going to vote tonight? I'm not asking for a vote, I just don't know what would be the next step.
So, what's, what's going to happen is I'm going to make sure everybody that wants to be heard is heard, because although this isn't a formal public hearing, I promised you once.
That's fair.
And then it'll be an open floor, and then anybody that wants to make a motion to approve or disapprove, or to continue, we would take that vote.
Okay.
That is on the agenda. I'm personally just staring at this memo that says that we can't enact this, so I'm pondering what my thoughts are on that, but for now, I'd like to...
The federal government, the federal judiciary system says you can't. So you have to weigh that. Now, I don't have that backup with me now, I certainly can get it for you, and to come here and lie to you would be insane. Could you catch, catch me right up?
Well, what I, what I will be very interested to see, and, I actually think quite highly of the ACLU on First Amendment work, so I'd be very interested to see their response to this memo at some point.
I don't want to do that.
Well, they, they put forward the municipal immigration ordinance, so presumably, they're ready to explain why municipalities have the authority to enact it, if they want to on policy grounds, but...
So you'll ask them?
So, I, I, I don't know that I have the votes to do that, but we'd have...
Oh, you count on your own, on all of us?
Yeah. But I am, I do want to make clear, does anybody from the public want to be heard on this? This is the equivalent of a public hearing. Yes?
Do I respond to this, or not?
You know, you're the sponsor, so what I'm not going to do is let people interrogate you, or ask you questions directly, but...
Okay, through you.
You're supposed to come through me, I try to be informal about this, but sometimes people in your seat take a lot of heat, but...
Old man, I can take as much heat as you can have.
I have a feeling that's true, so, but let's, yeah, we spent a few minutes on this.
Barrefield Drive in Tiverton.
Tiverton resident?
Barney Field Drive in Tiverton.
I don't need your address.
I grew up in a town that was literally the crossroads at the end of World War II of the refugees, between the ethnic cleansing from the east and the American soldiers on the west. We were five miles from the Russian border, and luckily, we were in the western border. So I've, I've seen the plight of refugees, and the terror, the people that escaped Dresden bombings and all of that, and I think that was a slightly different situation, but it all has to do with being absorbed into the society that they end up in. And I can't imagine that Tiverton is the most ideal community, we have no transportation, public transportation. If we offer sanctuary, they cannot have legal traffic, driver's licenses, how are they going to economically succeed? We have no bus, we don't have buses for our people, never mind public transportation for anyone else. So I think that is a negative. And I would also think that people who are not living openly in this sense would be reluctant to take part of all of the things that we have to offer, and be really outgoing citizens of this town. And I think that anyone, and most of these refugees are educated people that deserve to operate at the level of their education, doctors being doctors and whatever else, I think those chances would be slightly denied to them, because they're not going to be able to go forward and get the licenses and, and whatever else it entails. So I think the best thing that, as a town, we could do is actually sponsor some people who come in the correct way, who have a job waiting for them here, we can set them up with a apartment for a number of, a little, a time, to give them the groundwork for succeeding. And I, I think that way, we would, we would really be doing a good thing. And I do hear, and I did look into it, it is quite expensive to become a citizen, they have to go medical tests, they have to do an awful lot that some people just can't afford, the ones coming up from South America, from poor nations. So if we, through churches or some sort of organization, sponsor somebody, I think we would be doing a much, much better thing than to just randomly open up our town to being a sanctuary town. That's just a thought of that I have, and I really, really empathize. All the, all the relations on my father's side were ethnically cleansed, so I know the plight of a refugee. Luckily, we were, we happened to be living there, and we were not, but we were the crossroads and information center for anyone, and if you remember, there were no cell phones, there weren't even cell phones, and the bridges on both sides of the town, coming in and out, railroad bridges, were blown out because the Americans didn't want the Russians to come west, and the Germans had already blown out the bridges going east. So I do know what it is to live with refugees, and all the problems in school, as a small child, and people literally dropping dead on the streets, so, I emphasize, but I think we should help positively, and not just okay something and then forget about it. My thoughts.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Second call? All right, the floor is open on the council for any comments, questions, or motions.
Mr. President, with a, partly in answer to that, I want to make clear, it's understood that sanctuary in this case is more of a term of art, where, what the statute actually does, and this is one of my concerns with the proposal, is you're raising an emotional issue on which people may disagree or not, or agree or disagree for grounds on how the federal government is enforcing border security. That isn't in any way what's in this proposal. In essence, this would be enacting very sweeping, in my, in my view, disturbingly sweeping, changes to town policy on a whole suite of issues, in order to send a statement about something that's not even related. So for example, this says, "The LEA, which I gather is us, shall not collect or maintain information about political activities unless it's involved in criminal activities, investigation," which seems to me, something like that would almost make it impossible to keep track of voter registrations, because you're keeping track of who's in what political group. And, and so I'm just pointing out, I'm not arguing that point specifically, but I'm pointing out that that, this ordinance would be very sweeping response, essentially as a, a rebuke on a separate matter. So I, and I also wanted, with regard to the question of whether the memo applies to Supreme Court precedents, the memo is with regard to state law, so what, if you had cited a Supreme Court... had cited a Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court suggesting that we could pass this ordinance, this would be separate, I would think, because it's a matter of state law.
State Supreme Court, Tiverton?
I don't know, I'm just saying that the memo suggests that the Rhode Island constitution is what would prevent us from taking action.
Oh, that's not a museum.
Right. I don't, no, I don't know if that...
But the provenance and the state have already done this, they must have found a way to, high step.
Well, I can't speak to that, I don't know what specifically they've done. I think at the state level, it was more of an administrative thing during J.P.'s administration, an executive order type thing, as opposed to legislation, which is what effectively this ordinance would be. So, there may be different considerations. I was just pointing out that if, if you're referring to U.S. Supreme Court as the permission for us to do that...
No, just go to second call.
All right. Floor is open. Any questions, comments? Second call. Okay, so, I'm gonna ask if there's any motions. If there's no motions, then the matter will pass administratively on to the general, no action. Will there be any motion on this matter?
Yeah, in order to make a decisive motion, so as not to just leave it out there as we essentially said no by not saying anything, I will move not to accept Mr. Provost's proposal.
Certainly accept it into the record, you just mean to disapprove taking further action?
Right.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Perry, all right. Any further brief introductory remarks from Mr. Katz or Mr. Perry?
I spoke.
Mr. Perry? Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to the motion to disapprove?
I don't think we need a, I don't think we need a motion to disapprove. I am sympathetic to, to the plight particularly of refugee families and especially children, and I agree with Mr. Provost that, that it is shameful what's, what is happening. I'm just not sure that, that this particular idea is the right way to address it. Regrettably, I think the right way to address it is to, God help us, get Congress to actually do something, rather than kick the can around and, and, you know, but I, I, there's a part of me that feels a little harsh about, you know, sort of voting no on it. There may be something in the future that, that we can do that allows us to express our distaste for the situation besides this particular option.
Somebody said a proclamation would be a step forward, which is, that's non-binding, right?
That's right.
Do I have to go through this whole procedure again to ask for a proclamation? Or can I just switch?
We'd have to go through the whole procedure again.
Ah, Jesus.
Sorry.
Well, 'cause it says ordinance.
Yep.
We get, we like to be squeaky clean with our compliance with the open meetings.
Yeah, but I think this is obvious.
I, I have no problem, I have no problem with the council taking tough votes over and over again, so if you put that back on the agenda, I'm gonna sponsor it again. I, I'm also, this is just me, I'd like to see, I don't, you know, there's this memo, nobody's seen it, I'd be really interested to see a response to that memo. Well, I don't know that I can just unilaterally ask the solicitor to do a workup on it, but if there were, if there was a consensus or of asking the solicitor to pine on it. If I were you, and I'm not telling you what to do, and you saw this memo that said that this body doesn't have the legal authority, so when I'm holding a memo, now, so this is just my view.
Yep.
Right, there's this, the joke about the lawyers, right? One lawyer on an island starves, but two lawyers on an island are like, you know, you know, good to go forever, right? So, I, I don't know if this memo from Mr. Dacisto is correct or not, but what I do know is I sit here today, I have a memo that says we do not have the authority to take this action, and I know this, in this town, without some backup, without some authority, somebody out there is gonna file some complaint that says, you know, you're holding a memo that says you don't have the authority to take it, and I would bet you, I would bet you that there's somebody waiting to pounce on that with a complaint. So, I'm gonna support a motion to disapprove for no other reason than I don't have any contra authority. I don't have to agree with this memo, but I need something contra so that I know that nobody's saying we're acting outside of our authority. Now, whether that's work you do or work that the town solicitor does, I...
I'm on my own.
I'm just here to tell you that we're sitting here holding this memo that says we don't have the authority to support the ordinance.
But could you, could I cast a little darkness on that memo?
I'm not saying I agree with it.
No, no, I'm not saying that either.
Because like I said, lawyers will often disagree.
That memo was directed, I was sitting right here, and they said, even another group before them, "I know what we need to know, you come back and tell us." So, I'm part of the thus, and he never showed up. So, he's playing on the table, which is not right.
Sorry, he who?
No, he was, that lawyer. He was supposed to get back to the council and me.
Well, he did. But he kept it on approval.
They never saw it, I never saw it. So, I don't think he's really on top of the stage, so I'm saying.
Okay. Does anybody wish to instruct the solicitor to do his own, or the current solicitor to do his review of prior solicitors' work on this?
I'd rather wait.
I asked.
I think that's moot.
I want to see if I can get everybody in the room to disagree with me. Because that's the only thing I can do to bring everybody together.
Look, Rob.
Okay, I think maybe solicitor and then...
Make a motion to accept Tony's letter as written?
We have a live motion on the floor. We have a live motion on the floor. Okay. It sounds like I don't have consensus, too. Now, did you want to speak on your own authority to this, or...
I, I just wanted to know that you have a live motion on the floor, so I don't want to go off topic until that's been resolved, and then if there's additional instruction from the council, I'd be happy to comment on that.
All right. Mr. Katz, what's your pleasure?
I think we should vote. I vote with a second.
Is there any objection to proceeding to vote?
We have a second.
Well, I think, I think it was to disapprove the request to take the motion. Okay. Is there any objection to proceeding to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to disapprove, please signify with a I or show a hands. Any of those? Okay, before we leave, we're still figuring out legal services policy. Am I allowed to ask you to update this, or without support of the council?
Well, what I was gonna suggest is that perhaps I can get to that point without having to undertake a significant analysis on behalf, on the town's time, by sending that to the ACLU with a request for them to provide any feedback.
Is that, I'm not sure we're gonna agree, and again, as a matter of policy, I don't know that we have the votes, but I promise you the diligence on this. Is that acceptable to you, that we will send, can we do that in?
But we just voted no, right?
Right, but the, the question is, is there any objection to the solicitor doing what he just said, which is to send this public document to the ACLU with an invitation to comment, the ACLU to comment?
Is that a motion?
I don't know that it needs one, if we're of a consensus, but is there a consensus?
I don't, I don't believe it needs one, if you would like me to come back, if there is a response, then I will present that as a potential for an agenda item in the solicitor's comments at some future meeting, and then you can decide whether you'd want to have an assessment of it, but I don't think, you're not forced either to do or not do anything.
That strikes me as a lottery, so you're not gonna burn a lot of your own fuel on this, you're gonna send this memo, strike the privileged part, the ACLU, not a request, but an invitation for comment. Is that, is there any problem? That does sound pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I don't like that idea at all, to tell you the truth. I think we voted no, and, yeah. And to re, it would be a reconsider. It would be a reconsider of the vote, if you come back.
That's, that's...
Well, hold on, my, the question on the table with regard to this memo is, do we have a certain authority? It'd be interesting to know if the ACLU wants to expend its own resources to answer that question. We don't have to take any action at that point. If we want to, we can have the solicitor look at it more closely, which I would probably oppose doing, given time constraints and such, but to send it off to, you know, "Hey, ACLU, you wanna tell us what you think of this?" I don't see any reason not to do that, especially if they're gonna tell us we have more power, which...
But what, but what would be the purpose of it? Would the purpose to come back and reconsider our vote?
My, my...
So, what would be the purpose of doing that?
I, I just have a, you know, basic legal curiosity. I think Tony makes a good point in his memo that there are limits on what towns can do despite home rule charter in the state of Rhode Island, and I think it's an interesting point. I'd be curious, both for this subject matter and for future issues that might come before the council, as to whether those limits are agreed upon. But that's, I don't, I don't see any current value, Counselor DiBideros, if that's, I think what you're asking. I do not see any current value, given that you've already disposed of this issue. So, that's why I'm trying to limit the...
And my answer to that question, it's just one person, is that I, I think you have a right to force this council to take tough votes, and right now, we have a memo that says that, I don't want to say hide behind, and that's not right, the word I'm trying to say, but there's people like me that, you know, and I mean this, that I am concerned about someone claiming, you know, I've got a memo that's uncontradicted that says we don't have the authority to do something, I don't even reach the policy question, right? So, I think that we should put ourselves in the position that if we know we're allowed to take a vote on something, then we should, you know, that's why we're wearing the bullseye, and we should take that vote. That's why I'm interested in it. But that's just me, I'm just one person. All right, so, what are you telling me here? We're not gonna ask the solicitor, you know?
Well, ask the others.
But I think Ms. Cook is opposed to that. Do I need to vote on that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the other avenue here is, the other avenue would simply be to suggest that the movement, the citizen movement, provide that memo, which was just handed to him to the ACLU, and make the same request.
Would it have more import coming from your letterhead?
I, I, I don't know, but I think, I think if they choose to weigh in, they'll choose to weigh in.
But I think, and I'll do that if this is what it ends up being.
Okay.
People of the same profession tend to.
All right.
So, I'd like...
It looks like I don't have consensus, so if we can do that, maybe you will, and maybe I will, in my own individual capacity.
You can do it.
So, all right. Thanks for standing your ground and bringing up the tough topics, and take a look at this. All right?
Can you translate it for me? Well, thank you, Ken, I appreciate it very much. I'm surprised I got slammed on, but that's the way of it.
Well, this is my point, part of it might be that we're opening this memo.
But you got that, you understand that. You're not just seeing it, you're still... Thank you again.
Mr. Town Planner, did I skip something? Discussion and vote for ratification and acceptance of parcel one, forty, a forty-foot wide easement on the north side of the Schoolhouse Lot subdivision for Stonebridge Fire District to the town of Tiverton, that is North Brayton Road. Mr. Cock?
Yes, thank you, councilors. So, at the Planning Board's September 11th meeting, the board approved the Stonebridge Fire District's minor subdivision for the three-lot Schoolhouse Lots subdivision next to the Ranger School. We have from the Stonebridge Fire District a warranty deed granting the forty-foot wide easement. I believe there's currently a driveway that runs along that easement, and so, there was a letter from the chairman of the Planning Board to the Town Council informing them of this and recommending that the Town Council accept this parcel. This is really sort of some housekeeping, we need to ask you to formally accept the parcel. So, that's the reason for me being on the agenda this evening.
Any downsides?
No.
Just have your recommendation. You good on legal?
Yes.
You good on clerk? Comments from the public? The floor is open.
I do have just one, I just do have one question. And, and maybe this is moot, but, you know, when this came in front of us, it was for a three-lot, single-family home subdivision. That was why we agreed to do this, but I don't see that noted on the plan or recorded anywhere. So, I mean, and it was specific, that was the, that was the thing, it was going to be a three-lot, single-family home subdivision, and that was a big concern of the neighbors, and we heard that, it was, and it was part of our deliberation, but it's not recorded. Is anybody, is that...
Counselor Hilton, I can address that. If you, in your agenda packet, if you look at the notice of final plan decision, in the second paragraph, it states, "This is a subdivision of a 4.86 acre parcel into three lots to sell for the construction of single-family homes, running on North Brayton Road." So, that's in the written and recorded decision from the Planning Board.
Right, but that isn't, I mean, they could always come back and change that.
That would...
In other words, in other words, when the, when the subdivision, when the lots were recorded as separate lots in the deed, they're not recorded as being restricted to single-family homes.
That's correct, it is in the recorded decision, which I think would give some precedence, I would defer to the town solicitor for that, but I think the way the decision is written, the interpretation from the town planner and the planning board would be, these would be single-family lots. You are correct that the, someone who purchased a lot could come to the zoning board for relief, to ask for a duplex.
Well, actually, I believe they could just go back to the planning board and ask, and submit a new plan.
Correct, they could submit an amended final plan, but that would be, you know, then the planning board would have to make that determination.
Right, but it's not...
And I think since the planning board has clearly indicated these are for single-family homes, my guess is they would support what they have already approved.
Whoa, well, but, but it's owned, I'm not, but it's owned R-60, and, and the planning board, the, the planning board has, and we all have limited authority. If things are allowed under the zoning, they're allowed under the zoning, so just because you come forward with one plan that's allowed under the zoning, you can't, doesn't mean you can't go back with a different plan that's allowed under the zoning. I guess my question is, was there a discussion, because when it was brought to us as the council, and there was a lot of conversation amongst the neighborhood, that we were willing to do this in part because these were going to be single-family homes? And the only way to ensure that is that that had to be recorded as part of the deed when the subdivision was recorded, but it doesn't look like that happened.
So, make a motion.
We can't. No, we, no, we... They're, they're... The deed will have to be, we make a motion. I guess, I mean, I'm not even sure we can, maybe we can't do anything about it this, other than to ask Stonebridge if that was their intention, whether or not they'd be, because they haven't sold the property yet, but...
My sense is that if it, if the subdivision was recorded, then that ship has sailed. You can either accept this land or not accept this land. And actually, this, this deed has already been recorded, by the way, but it's not valid without the town's acceptance. People can't just hand off their property to the town unilaterally, so you have the option to not accept it, I guess, and, and keep it on the private tax roll to some extent, but I'm not really sure what other...
Oh, it'd stay back.
But there's, I believe you're getting an easement and some other benefit along with this.
Correct.
And it's not really the private tax roll, is it? Because it's a fire district, so you're not, I'm not even sure what leverage you would have.
I don't think there's any leverage in us not accepting it. I was just curious, because when I saw the recorded plan, I expected, I just guess I thought I expected that I would see a notation about the restriction based on what was presented to us, but that maybe is for another topic, so...
I think you're correct, though, Counselor.
For the rest of the council, this was a public hearing where neighbors came and talked to us about great, great concerns on what was gonna be built there, so that's why...
Wasn't it open space?
It was open space, but...
And weren't they supposed to, Stonebridge supposed to put a building on there that they were gonna use that building instead of the one-off of main?
No, no. Maybe a long time ago, they talked about it, but no.
So, all of a sudden, you're changing, okay, thank you, changing open space to now subdivisions?
No, they, they...
It's a long story.
The Stonebridge Fire District's building does not meet USDA and ADA handicap acts and a whole bunch of things, and because of that, they're no longer, and they've been under the gun for a while, they cannot get money from USDA, and as a small rural district water supplier, an enormous amount of their funding comes from there, and USDA said, "No more without handicap." And USDA said, no more without handicap accessible building. Like, no more, we won't give you anymore. So they need to either build, or buy, or something, a handicap accessible building. And they don't really have any cash to do with it. So they asked us, since they had given us the land that Ranger School is on, they owned, they gave it to us, gifted. And those three lots were, or that land was left open space. So they came back to us and said, we need to raise the money to be able to build a building so we can, can we, could we convert those, that land that we own back to three lots so we could sell those lots? That's how we'll raise the money to build the ADA building that we need so we can get our USDA operating money.
Thank you.
Just as a point of information, if this, or question of information, if this were approved and somebody wanted to build something other than a single family home, the neighbors would have an opportunity to be heard at the Planning Board again?
No.
Or they're done at this point?
If I can give you a little more information, I'm Susan Gill, Planning Board Chairman. So when this came before us, as the three lot, single family was how it was presented, and it was open space from Stonebridge Fire Department. So it came before the council, previous to you, for a zoning change. Some of the way it was presented during that public hearing for the zoning change to go from open space to R-60 was with the, what was presented at that time was three single family homes. The plot that's being given, that's being the town to take over is basically the Ranger School driveway. So that was originally attached to that lot that abutted it. And it just didn't seem to make sense then that a homeowner would own the driveway to Ranger School. So what we were proposing was that the town then take over, take acceptance of that parcel, and Stonebridge Fire Department would then have a permanent access easement to pass and repass over it to their property behind it. So I think what happened was Stonebridge created the easement, and it was recorded, but it was never, it hasn't been accepted by the council yet. So basically, what you would own, take ownership of is the driveway to Ranger School, which seemed to make the most sense. So you'd know then that it's your responsibility to care and maintain that driveway, which maybe is what you've been doing all along anyway, but it's no longer open space. But to clarify the point, under R-60, single family and two family are within the guidelines of that zoning ordinance. So if an applicant wanted to come back and amend the final plan and request the change for, like duplexes, if it came back before the Planning Board, we would not have a way to, we wouldn't be able to legally deny them that application. My concern is that the way it was presented to the council, and to convert the zoning from open space to R-60 was with the intention, very clearly, that it was going to be a single family. So I think we wouldn't have the ability to deny a two family construction, even though it would have to come back to us and be re-recorded as a two family. I don't know if the council has the authority to put a deed restriction on those lots then with the acceptance of this parcel. I don't know, that's the only other option. So I think that's what you're being asked to consider.
Shouldn't have been done initially, if that was the discussion here. I don't know if it's too late now.
I don't, well, I believe the fire district still owns those three lots, is that correct?
Right, I think, yeah, it's still owned by, as far as I know.
So the fire district has the right to deed restrict the land they own, and if the council's inclination was to suggest that they deed restricted, then that's a conversation that should be had with the fire district before the lots are sold.
Yes.
But I don't think the council has an independent ability to sort of spot zone those three lots into single family only, right? You'd have to modify your R-60 designation with regard to those lots. That's what a deed restriction would do if it was coming from the council as opposed to coming from the owner.
As far, sorry, as far as notifying a butters, because the neighborhood was very
concerned, if it comes back for final plan, we're not, we're not authorized, we don't have to notify a butters only for preliminary plan, but I'm sure word would spread, so I don't know. But we wouldn't be within our authority to deny an application for two family, because it's allowed in the R-60.
I'm wondering if, and I realize the rest of you weren't here at the time this happened, but it was presented to us, part of the arrangement was that these were going to be three single family house lots. And, you know, obviously, the neighbors were concerned, we heard them, they were here. It sounds like somehow this slightly fell through the cracks. But as Mr. Ciccioli says, we do have an opportunity to ask Stonebridge, because that's how they presented it to us. Would they, you know, be willing to abide by what they presented to us and be willing to deed restrict those lots if the rest of the council was so inclined and there was a consensus potentially, Mr. Reitzma or Mr. Ciccioli could reach out to Stonebridge and find out where they are on this?
Sounds reasonable to me. Any, how's that?
Would holding acceptance be leverage in that conversation? Or is it just irrelevant?
No, because that means they just don't, no, it just means that they continue to own the driveway to Ranger School. I mean, that's like...
And they don't pay taxes on it, so...
Right, I mean, they...
And you maintain it without owning it, so I'd actually think the weight of interest would probably go the other way.
Yeah.
I'm not very good at poker.
Okay, so we want to accept the recommendation as presented, but then also...
Reach out to Stonebridge concerning.
We have a consensus on that. Okay? You two will figure that out. All right.
Do we need a motion?
I just said a lot of that, but that was all. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept this as presented, as recommended.
Do we?
I hope we do.
So moved.
I've hit three hours and ten minutes.
Second, second.
Okay, we have a live motion and a second. To accept as presented with a minister reflected consensus request to Town Administrator and Councilperson to reach out to our friends at the Stonebridge Fire District. Does anybody want to be heard further on this matter? No questions, comments from the public? Any objections, deciding to vote? Hearing done. All those in favor? Seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, as you suggested, we're after 10 o'clock, and I think we have maybe good news, maybe not, stuff in the executive session related to collective bargaining. I'd like to move to that now, if we could.
My two items will be short, and I think one of them is important for the Town Administrator. His contract.
I'm sure all of this sounds good.
Well, because obviously, my, well, obviously, my two, my two items are the ones that we're just going to forget about. Unbelievable.
Are you still pressing? No, no, we've got, I'm really, we've got, hopefully, some good stuff going on with the police, so I really want to...
Well, whatever, if you want to...
Well, if we hurry, we, I mean, some of these things we can get through very quickly, if not everybody...
Well, it's kind of predictable that out of the three items, my two are the ones there, and I'm starting to get a little paranoid, Rob. Yeah. Like you accused me of earlier.
Do you want to impress on that motion, or which pleasure? Is Tinsel in the room?
She's on call.
Could...
For a call.
We're within half an hour or something.
Could I put a 15-minute delay on my motion?
Okay. Let's keep going. All ten, please, let's get him here. I can't leave this executive session tonight.
How about the...
Okay, so, my, my motion, my, my agenda is that Jan is up for his yearly. We did a six-month evaluation and placed him on probation for six, for the months. He's up in April. This is, what you have in front of us is the template that we have used for all of our evaluations for the Town Administrator. You may want to tweak it at some point, but I think we need to use this now. What happens is, I am suggesting that we have two weeks to do this. We give Nancy all of our evaluations. What she does is she, everything you wrote will be put under council one through seven. So no one knows what your comments are individually, and no one knows what your evaluation are. She takes these, she averages them, and she comes up with an average for the entire council. So if it's okay with all of you, I'm giving you a little bit of homework. Go home and do this, get it to Nancy, and then we'll schedule an executive session when Rob feels fit. Maybe in two weeks, we might be able to do that. Why everybody individually is not named is because this evaluation comes as one council. So that's why Nancy averages everything. We go into executive, we look at the numbers, and then we discuss it with Jan. And at that point, he's up for a reappointment, April 1st, I believe.
March 15.
March 15.
I count days, right?
Is it? I thought it was.
May I suggest the English major may, under paragraph one, change financial town meeting to financial town...
Well, Nancy, why don't you do that? And then Nancy can change that for the next one.
And I think, I think we agree, there's nothing that stops others from putting narrative comments, but you could do that if you...
Nancy will explain.
All comments are made, and then they are put, without who the comments are from, listed every question, every set of comments.
Yeah, all the comments will be included, and that's the way we normally do it.
And then we have a group, a group debrief.
Don't sign your names or anything like that.
So, Rob, could we schedule this for the next executive session in two weeks and say everybody get it back to Nancy in a week?
Works for me. Is there any objection to that? All right, thanks for driving us. Are you going to do a selfie now also?
Yes, he usually does.
Okay. Do we do three sixties? It's always...
No, I'm not going to.
Okay. Next up, Town Clerk, looking for money. Going to give it to her?
Yes, unfortunately, I have someone going back out on medical. It'll be another eight or nine weeks. It'll go right through the, well, up to the financial town referendum. And it's actually going to cost me about $7,500. I'm trying to stop spending in my department and see if I can scrounge up some money for my own departments.
And you're going to be away, as I recall, too, right?
I'm going to be away from April 12th to April 20th, just a week.
Can't go.
One of those days of the party.
Can't go.
And then Nancy, just $4,500 from council contingency?
Yes, I won't spend it, depending on what I have to, but up to that amount.
Do we have that money in council?
Yes, we do.
Eighty something.
Yeah, we have eighty-four thousand.
Eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, because...
You want me to ask for more, Rob?
Rob, keep in mind, that's, that's for the contracts also, so that's why there's so much in there right now, because we haven't settled any contracts.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the clerk to hire a temporary employee.
By the way, this, these temporary employees that we hired, they have been through the personnel board and hired through the process.
Very good. I knew you wouldn't let us down, Nancy.
All right, would any of us like to be heard on a request to transfer $4,500 from the council contingency fund to cover an absence, planned absence of the, well, cover an absence in the personnel, in the clerk's office? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Oh, my hand was slow getting up, but I've...
I got you.
One slow hand.
Okay, next up is Counselor DiMederos. This is a request to advertise request for proposals for special counsel, discussion and vote on litigation of Colter versus Town of Tiverton Katz, Driggs. This sounds like something we should recuse from.
Yes.
So I'm going to turn it over to you, okay?
Thank you. Jan, you're over there all by yourself.
As we know, there is a lawsuit. There will be a hearing on April 1st, I understand, for some, some of the councilors to take themselves off the lawsuit. And I feel that at this point, we need a special counsel to keep track of what's going on. It was said by the other litigator, I'm sorry, Mr. Rom, did say that this may go forward whether Counselor Colter, Katz, or Driggs is there. So I feel that we should be a little proactive and send out an RFP so we have a special counsel available to us. Any discussion?
No. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, I just have, well, the advisory opinion was that it was all right for Solicitor Secconi to handle the dismissal and withdrawals. Are you talking about something different?
Well, I'm talking about if this case goes forward with the other, the other litigator, which would be Mr. Rom.
Well, I think it's, I think it's all...
Go ahead. I can't argue him, I'm tired.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to...
Well, I think...
Are we talking about two different things?
No, we're not. We're talking about one lawsuit, and right now, that lawsuit still has Colter, Katz, and Driggs on it.
I know, but it's saying here that it's perfectly okay to use a, use a special counsel or...
Right, and that's...
Use the interim counsel that Mr. Secconi can...
So what I'm doing is, I'm making a motion that we hire a special counsel instead of using Attorney Ciccioli. That is my motion, and go out for RFP. Because it gave us an option, and I, and I believe we should use a special counsel. So I make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that?
I think that, I think that we should, I think that we should put this in place, that there's a hearing on April 2nd, someone will need to represent the town for that, and it may be a very simple, you know, vanilla envelope kind of process. You hope, but you never know. And there is, you know, there is, Mr. Rom has stated that he does not intend to dismiss his case, so that will continue on. And, you know, I feel that the, I feel that, you know, the Ethics Commission made it clear that that was in the council purview. And I think, given all the history and everything that's happened, that that is the cleanest, clearest, most transparent, and probably least upsetting for a lot of people way to go forward. I do think that, to clarify, a couple of things. One, since it's a litigation matter, before anybody says, oh, you know, we're spending extra money, we wouldn't be, because either we pay Mr. Ciccioli or we pay somebody else, because it's a litigate, this is litigation, so it's, it comes out of the litigation budget, which we pay somebody, you know, hourly anyway. So it's, it's one or the other. And I'd also, the one thing I would feel strongly about in terms of an RFP is that we not put somebody on retainer for this, that this is a service that we use if necessary. It may be very simple, and it may be no more than just accepting those withdrawals and nothing more may happen from it. But given that it's the middle of February, and it'll take a little while to get an RFP and select somebody, in order to have somebody in place for them, we should start now.
Now, we did the same thing once before for another case, and we had that lawyer there, and if we needed him, he was available. And it worked out very well that time also. And it didn't, it didn't cost any extra money, because somebody would have had to litigate this anyway. The only thing that...
I think we have the RFP from the last time, right, Nancy?
We should.
We should. As far as the rates, I think we should do the hourly rate that Tony was charging us and see if that's okay with everybody, and see whether or not that that's, that we have someone interested.
Did we have a rate in the last one? Is there a rate in it?
That's, I'm not sure, but I think we did have a rate in the last one. Did we have a rate in the last one in the RFP? I think we put a range, but I'm not sure, but we'll look that up. Okay. Maybe you're right, Trish, but I know that we eventually...
I don't remember.
Can I ask a question? I, so I'm, Tony DeSisto is withdrawn on this matter, I am entered on this matter. And so until such time as you have a special counsel, I will still have sort of administrative, ministerial, or what have you to address on this. I just want to make sure the council's aware of that, that we can't substitute, you know, until you have somebody in place to substitute. I can't withdraw, I'm sorry, until you have somebody in place to substitute.
Understood, but, but we're assuming that there is zero to do related to this until the withdrawals, unless you would let us know if, for example, if Mr. Rom filed a new motion or something like that.
Well, I know there's a stipulation for dismissal of the counselors who are dismissing or, sorry, withdrawing. So, you know, there are ministerial steps to be taken. Obviously, if there's a hearing with a decision for the town, you know, I would come back.
Although, our understanding is, it's not till, there's not something until April 2nd.
That may be the case.
Which is why we're attempting...
That's why we're doing it now, because we understand it is April 2nd.
The courts are never quite as predictable as, you know, we'd like, or parties aren't always as predictable as we'd like. So if something comes in, I will obviously, you know...
Just let us know.
But you will let us know and inform all seven of us that something has come in and what the action will be?
Yeah, as always, yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor and a second.
Can we, can I say one thing about the range, though?
I don't know.
Member of the public.
But this is not listed as a public hearing.
No, this isn't listed as a public hearing, Justin.
It's not listed as a public hearing.
I just want to point out that there's a stipulation that has been delivered to the solicitors.
You've been told to recuse from all the discussion, Justin.
But the Ethics Committee says I can speak as a member of the public in the body, has been listening to members of the public.
Only if I open it up to the public, and I haven't opened it up to the public.
If I may, Counselor, I think it's worth noting for the record that, as I noted a minute ago, that there are, there is a stipulation pending for the withdrawal of those parties. And I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that that is, you know...
Explain that to us.
Needs to be filed. So in order for the counselors to withdraw, we need to file a stipulation agreeing that they are withdrawing. If the council is telling us that we don't want to let them withdraw, that's a different question.
I can't hear what we're saying at all.
Okay.
No, but when...
I think that's the only concern.
But, but, but will you not first need to see their withdrawals? I mean, will the attorney, whoever, first not to see their withdrawals?
I'm sorry, not...
Will, is the process not that they will file this, these withdrawals, and then the town files a stipulation to accept the withdrawals?
It's a joint stipulation.
Okay.
So all the parties have signed it. All the parties have agreed, as I understand it, to stipulate to this. So that needs to get filed.
Which is what we're, which is what we're hiring the special counsel to do.
To file the stipulation?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, okay, that will be a delay. The, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not explaining this properly. So there's, the intent is to have those counselors withdraw from that, the referenced litigation. There's a hearing that we believe will be...
April 2nd.
April 2nd, but there'll be, we can file a stipulation immediately, saying that the town agrees to their withdrawal. Unless the town is objecting to their withdrawal, and that's why I asked the question that way. It's not, I'm not suggesting you are objecting to it, I'm just telling you that that's the next procedural step, is to sign and submit the joint stipulation so that the withdrawal can proceed. And that is...
And who's drafting the joint stipulation?
It's already been drafted.
By who?
I don't know who drafted it. I have a copy of it, signed by all the withdrawing parties.
And who...
Who drafted it?
I don't know.
Well, I would like to know who drafted this.
I didn't draft it, that's all I know. I received a copy of it, I didn't draft it.
Okay.
Well, Justin, if you like to tell us who drafted it...
Hang on a second, hang on a second. Now I'm slightly confused. So, so this is obviously, this is what I thought. It's been drafted by the parties who wish to withdraw, correct?
That's all I guess.
That's what I would have...
I didn't ask, I didn't think to ask.
Okay. It's been drafted by the parties who, you know, and it needs to be reviewed and agreed to by the town of Tiverton, correct?
Correct.
There's nothing for the town of Tiverton to draft, it's simply to review and agree to whatever's in that, in those withdrawals, correct?
It needs to be signed and submitted to the court.
And when does that need to be submitted to the court?
I would say as soon as practical.
As soon as practical. Before the hearing in April?
I would think in advance, some period in advance of that. I'd have to look at, to see if there's a court rule about timing, or I don't have that answer for you, but not, doesn't have to happen today, but not the day before the hearing either, so...
But the town council would have to look at it inside it also, is that what you're saying?
You know, I'm not sure on a procedural motion if it's typical for the council to...
Right, so why, okay.
But somebody has to sign it. So I guess I'm raising it because somebody has to sign it, right? So that's...
Someone from the town has to sign it.
Okay.
So we have to look at it.
So could you please, could you please make copies available to the...
The four of us?
The four of us?
Absolutely.
As soon as possible?
Yeah, I just received it, so I will, I can do that before I leave tonight.
Okay. So if we could please see copies of that, that would be wonderful. And if that is something that we need for you to do before we have a special counsel in place, that's, that could be fine.
And it may, in fact, just, you know, eliminate the need for the special counsel, because you, if you file a stipulation, the court then accepts it, which I guess the court can do.
Although Mr. Rom is, there's still a...
No, no, I'm sorry, but, right, that's fair.
There's still a case out there.
Yeah, so it leaves that issue. But I think what you can do is you can save that special counsel having to go to a hearing on this issue, as long as the court approves a stipulation, which I don't see why it wouldn't.
Right.
You've taken that step, and then the question of whether it proceeds, whether, you know, I think, what I'm trying to do is not have you, you know, pinch where something happens with the case.
Right, and we don't...
You don't have your special counsel yet, and I'm understanding your guidance, that you don't want this to proceed without special counsel. So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm not going against your wishes.
Understood, that makes sense.
Right, and you just clarified it much more than we've ever had to clarify.
That's good.
Thank you.
I have a cold, I'm not, you know, my clearest right now, but I'm trying.
No, you were clear enough.
Okay.
So if, you know, if the council wants to, I mean, I can provide copies of that tonight even, and if you want to authorize the signing of the stipulation by the town manager, whomever would typically sign those kind of things, or by me, as the counsel who is in the case today, then we can move that along, if that's your preference.
Well, I think we need time to look at it, I'm not even sure what's in there.
It's, it's pretty bare bones. I'm happy to read it, I just received it as I sat down here.
Well, if we could just see copies of them, and that's fine, and as I said, if nothing, if we have a special counsel who's ready and nothing happens, then we don't need them, then we don't need them. But if we do, then there's, you know, we're not scrambling at the last minute.
And I would like to not vote right now on this until we actually look at it. Do you agree with me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe in two weeks, we can do it, and it's not really delaying it. It'll be February still, so, won't it, I think? It feels like it should be, no, well... All right, so I have a motion on the floor and a second. And any further discussion? All those in favor? I have an RFP first. Against?
I'm staying.
Okay. All right, Rob, come on back.
Can they come back?
Everybody can come back.
All right, town administrator announcements. Hearing none? Do you have anything, Jan? No? Okay. Council announcements. We have one stated item on the agenda. Any general counselor announcements? Okay. All right, so we had a special meeting, I think it was last Wednesday, and the attorney, and the attorney, update on response, the Attorney General arising from the Open Meeting Act complaint to the Office of the Attorney General of the State of Rhode Island, Hilton et alia v. Tiverton Town Council dated January 17th. I promised that we would come back and have an open session discussion on that, and that's what we have. I think this is quick. I promised that our response, which was due Friday, would be released to the public, has been released to the public.
Yes.
Okay. If I wanted to read it, where would I find it? Call Nancy?
I'm sorry, what?
Nancy has it.
The Attorney General's office. Is that posted somewhere, or is that simply nervous?
It's not posted, but it's there.
Just want to make sure anybody that wants to read the response has access to it.
Someone's, they've already been coming in to get...
Okay. So Nancy Mallow, yeah, Nancy Mallow is your...
I've already had an average for it, yes.
Justin has a question.
He thinks that we should...
Okay, because he's over here whispering this to me. Should we leave the table?
Just because the process, so people understand, is they filed, they filed a complaint. It's titled Hilton and Them versus the Town of Tiverton. We had five days from the time it was filed and completed to respond. Now, they have five days to respond. They didn't, two of them did not recuse until an hour into a discussion of this prior.
It was not an hour.
This would...
All right, but nobody told us we had to accuse ourselves, and not only that, but this is against, we put it against the entire town council also.
Right, but it's a matter, you are the complainants. This is your legal matter.
Yeah, but we've already seen your response. It's all in the open. It's nothing...
And it's not, it's, unless there's something that is attorney-client privilege, that the town solicitor has said, I don't think, unless the town solicitor's gonna say, I'm going to do something or discuss something here. What you're saying here right now is public information. We're not asking to participate. There's nothing for us to vote on. Rob is making announcements.
Well, because there wasn't vote.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if there's a vote, it's discussion.
There was a vote, we are gonna get nowhere in the next year.
You are standing and discussing a matter in which you are the complainants. I just want to note for the record that you should, and you're in your period to respond to the complaint. I'm just saying, the standard should be the same across the board, and you all should recuse for this.
This isn't a lawsuit, and it's not a lawsuit.
It's not a lawsuit.
It is a lawsuit, Hilton versus Tiverton.
It's not a lawsuit, it's a complaint to the Attorney General.
Shouting each other down isn't gonna work.
I don't even care anymore if you like it or not, Rob, if I'm shouting, okay? Because you're shouting too. All right? And apparently, for you can shout, but the three of us can't say a word.
I'll tell you what.
I'm shouting at you, I'm just trying to say one at a time.
I'm not gonna recuse, but I'm gonna leave the table, because I just am ready to leave the table, so how's that?
Do whatever you want. I don't know, anyway.
And Mr. Chichioni, I would remind you that you represent the whole body here. You have a responsibility to the entire body, not just to four people, but to the entire body. And so far, I haven't seen you yet try and say, as solicitor, this is my advice of how we should handle this, and this is what I think we should do. I almost...
I actually understand that the other day when you didn't give an opinion.
How am I letting you imagine the solicitor? Are you gonna stay here or not?
No, because we have the right to speak. The other day, you even said, this isn't my meaning. You didn't even give us an opinion. You were representing those four, not us three.
Respectfully, counselor, I understand my responsibilities.
I don't think you do.
So we just had a matter where, even though we've already withdrawn, just to be safe, we recused, and we have a live matter with the three of them as complainants that insist on being here. And you wouldn't even let the public speak.
Just as a, to clarify my memory, at our meeting last time, I did raise the question of whether Ms. Hilton and Mr. Perry should recuse. The solicitor said, we are in very tricky legal grounds. It is up to them to get an ethics opinion. And they insisted on sitting in our executive session for over an hour, I understand from the clerk's records. I'm just raising the concerns, because as I said, we just, we just recused. I went to the microphone as a member of the public, which I'm allowed to do under the Code of Ethics, to offer clarifying information and save a lot of discussion, and I was refused to speak, so that's where we are.
Okay, well, I want to make sure that I have, as clear as I can be, about the procedural posture. We had to have a special meeting to meet this window between five days and 10 days. That meeting did happen on Wednesday, and we had to file a response, I closed the business Friday, which we hit that deadline. I guess with a couple hours is fair. That is a public document that is available. And I guess what happens next is the three counselors who are brought the complaint and provide an additional response within five is a business days? So they would have until next, I guess, Friday, the, today's, today's the 11th, so Friday, the 16th, 15th, whatever that is. From there, I do not know what happens, although I know that our solicitor has been in contact with the Attorney General's office to clarify procedure. Did you want to comment on that, or is that...
I included, in the response and the documents that I provided to the clerk, I included a brief memorandum explaining my conversation with the Special Attorney General on the conflicting legal doctrines that we're facing here, and it is a very tricky situation legally. You have a balance between the right of counselors to counsel, legal counsel, and the transparency, both in terms of the public and in terms of what right other counselors have to see documents that are produced in the meetings of the council. And so, on balance, it was suggested by the Special Attorney that we're doing as best we can, given the competing interests, and they saw no problem with the approach we were taking in terms of treatment of minutes, the question of recusal from certain components. And while there is no perfect solution, given the odd nature of counselors filing essentially suits against themselves as members of the council, you know, we are doing what we can with the best guidance we can from the Attorney General.
As far as any of us know, there must be an exception somewhere, but none of us have ever recalled a situation where a town counselor has filed a complaint against itself. So some of this is, and also related is that there are other complaints. So the, for example, the complaint in the open meetings complaint represents the ethics complaints that were filed by three other people against some of us on the council, of which all three of those were unanimously dismissed by the Ethics Commission. So that is an angle on it as well. I would just say briefly that, what is this case about? There were three complaints, or three allegations. The first allegation is that the four, that the town council, the four majority that are here engage in what's called a ruling quorum, which means that although, that we talked about the case or made a decision on the case before it came up on December 27th. The second allegation is that the agenda stated that we were considering the appointment of Giovanni Chichioni as the town solicitor, when the allegation is that we did not disclose that he is affiliated, or we were potentially appointing his law firm, of which he's a partner. And the third allegation is that somebody failed to distribute the proposal by Mr. Chichioni when he was a candidate to the entire town council. The third of those complaints were dismissed out of hand by the Attorney General, leaving the only two left. And our response, if you read it, will go into, I won't hog the microphone at 10:40 at night, as to why we think that those cases have no merit. And we'll see. Okay. Is there anything else? All right. Towns list announcements, any other towns list announcements?
No.
Town clerk?
No.
I would like to see a motion to go into closed executive session sponsored by the town administrator pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2, collective bargaining with our police and fire unions, IBPO and IAFF. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm looking for a roll call vote, noting that Counselors Perry, Hilton, and DiMederos have left the meeting.
No, it's you.
Oh, yes. Are you returning for the vote? Okay, stand by.